Test.
There we go.
Good morning. Apparently, there is a really significant backup on I-10, and a couple of our guests are not here yet. So if it's okay, we're going to take a couple more minutes. Okay, thank you. Thank you and good morning. We're going to go ahead and get started. Thank you so much for your patience. It is Tuesday, January 23rd. Pima County Board of Supervisors meeting. Can I ask for a roll call to establish quorum, please?
Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz.
Present.
Supervisor Lee.
Present.
Supervisor Scott.
Here.
Chair Gruhavna.
Here.
Let the record show, all board members are present.
Thank you. And so, we have... I'm going to ask for your patience. We're going to have a moment of silence for two people that have passed away recently from our Pima County family. Ed Moore, supervisor from 1984 to 1996, and Art Ekstrom, who was with Pima County for 31 years, almost 32. He retired, and then they brought him back. And so, we have a couple slides, and I'll go ahead and let those play, please. Thank you. Now, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. It's going to be offered by Ron G., who will be retiring February 2nd after 31 years with Pima County and the Pima County Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'm so glad you made it. Do you want to say anything? Because we were just... I was very much looking forward to it, and then they said, "We have someone that can sub." I'm like, "I know," but I really wanted to be able to thank you personally from all of us for all of your years of service.
You know, Chair Gruhavna, members of the board, Ms. Lester, and all the attendants here, thank you very much for your patience allowing me to be here today. It's truly my honor. I've been working here for three decades. It's been an incredibly rewarding career to be part of public safety and working for Sheriff's Department and working for Sheriff Nano. So, thank you. I appreciate the honor, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, we have the land acknowledgement. Tisha is stuck in the same traffic that Mr. G. was stuck in. And so, Ana Rojo Keen, she's a public policy advocate for Prima Veda Foundation, has agreed to read the land acknowledgement. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you for having me, and I do apologize that my boss, Tisha Tolman, our CEO, is stuck in that unfortunate traffic situation. We're hoping for the best for everybody involved. And so, a little bit about Prima Veda before I begin. We serve veterans, individuals, and families who are experiencing poverty, and we assist around 8,000 individuals in Pima County about each year. And it's estimated that our impact goes greater to about 30,000 community members, like I said, individuals, veterans, and their families. So, with that, I will present the land acknowledgement on behalf of Tisha Tolman, our CEO. On behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from time immemorial and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homelands of the Tohanna-Atham Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Pasquayaki tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive toward building equal partnerships with Arizona's tribal nations. So, thank you for allowing me to read that, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Next, we have pause for pause.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us. Today, I brought Snow. And I brought Snow today because she's a really great example. Sometimes folks peep... or, sorry, sometimes folks think that pets that end up at the shelter may have behavioral problems, may be there for a reason. Snow is a really great example, but that's just not true. She's a really great dog, super friendly with all people she meets, little kids. She's done great with other dogs. She plays with other dogs in our playgroups every day. Just an all-around really special dog. Ended up at our shelter as a stray, as so many of them do. So, she's one of 461 dogs looking for a home today. We also have lots of cats right now that are looking for a foster home, that are recovering from some medical issues that could really use... even a spare bathroom would really help them to recover. them to recover and feel better and be ready for adoption. So, like I said, we have 461 dogs, about 100 cats today. So if you're ready for your new best friend, please come down. Dogs and puppies are currently free to adopt, so it's the perfect time to find your best friend. Thank you all.
Thank you. And then we have agenda adjustments. What is that?
Yes, on the regular agenda, page 2, item 5, proclamation, there's correction to the title of Dr. Teresa Hill. It should read Chief Executive Officer. On page 5, item 18, recorder, resolution number 2024-6. This item will be heard at a time cern of 10:30. On the addendum, page 1, item 3, executive session regarding communication with the federal government, this item will be heard at a time cern of 12:00 PM. And on page 1, item 5, Board of Supervisors, the IGA with the City of South Tucson to support provision of fire and emergency medical services. Supervisor Heinz requests this item be heard at a time cern of 11:30 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no objections, we'll go ahead and make those adjustments. And now we're going to move up item 13. This is an acknowledgement of Suzanne Shields, project manager, Regional Flood Control District, for 30 years of service. I'll turn it over to Ms. Leisher, Mr. DeBonis.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Carmine DeBonis. Good to see you on this rainy morning today. So I'm honored to be able to recognize Suzanne Shields, who I've worked with as a friend and a colleague over the last 30 years. So, you know, it's amazing that when you work alongside somebody that you're able to pick up good qualities and traits from them. And so, you know, I've had a lot of great mentors in my time at Pima County, but I view Suzanne as a colleague mentor and, you know, she's someone who was always able to be firm but fair, was really devoted to the community and to Pima County and the Pima County family. And I've loved the opportunity to work with you over 30 years. I mean Suzanne has really broke through a lot of ceilings in an industry of engineering dominated by males, working in Pima County to really do some landmark achievements. And the establishment of the Regional Flood Control District is one of those. And so not every jurisdiction in Arizona has a Regional Flood Control District. Here in Pima County we do and Suzanne was instrumental in the formation of that. When you look at the major flood events that happened on seemingly 10-year intervals starting in 1983, Suzanne was a part of the emergency response to that. And not only as the event was occurring to help protect lives and property, but in the time since then. So the whole approach to the river system and the concrete soil protection that you see along our major watercourses on the Santa Cruz River and the Rito River, Suzanne was involved in pioneering that approach and since that time has saved countless numbers of lives and acres of property as a result of that. She was instrumental in the establishment of the loop, the Chuck Huckleberry Loop. And so taking that disaster of flood and having to protect property, but also putting amenities in there that become renowned nationally and internationally, Suzanne has had a direct hand in that. Delivered probably hundreds of millions of dollars of capital flood control improvement projects, has been a great leader to her staff, has run a very efficient department, has developed staff in that department to step in to leadership roles and to continue the great work that she established. And so, you know, I am countlessly and endlessly honored to be standing here with you and to be able to recognize you in your retirement of, you know, 30 years of service to Pima County. And so thank you very much, Suzanne.
I just want to thank the public Board of Supervisors. Pima County, I've had a great career and I've tried to always do my best.
Okay, now we're on to proclamations. This is the presentation of proclamation to Dr. Teresa Hill, Chief Executive Officer for Tucson Values Teachers, proclaiming the month of February 2024 to be Love of Reading Month in Pima County. And for another proclamation, we have school board members. And so we have a lot of school board members that I know go and do Love of Reading in a lot of schools. So if, I'll go ahead and move that item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed.
I just need to point out that Teresa and I are both proud former Flowing Wells Junior High Mustangs. I am. Whereas the citizens of Pima County, Arizona stand firmly committed to promoting reading as the catalyst for our students' future academic success, their preparation for America's jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy. And whereas our schools and libraries have provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education of our youth, grounded in the principle that educational investment is key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life. And whereas important events like Love of Reading Month promote children's literacy and the love of reading by communicating to all age groups that reading is fun, exciting, and essential. And whereas community-wide engagement in programs and activities are needed in order to make our children the best readers in the world. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of February 2024 to be Love of Reading Month in Pima County, throughout Pima County, and encourages all citizens, young and old, to celebrate and encourage the practice and joy of reading.
Just thank you. As you know, teachers are what make a difference and so I am honored to accept this proclamation. Okay. On the addendum, number one, we have a proclamation, presentation of proclamation to Dustin Williams, Pima County School Superintendent, proclaiming the month of January 2024 to be School Board Recognition Month. I'll move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item passes unanimously. I know we have some board members here and so if you are here, can you join me and Superintendent All right. So, whereas school board members are elected to sit in trust for their diverse communities and in a capacity that are charged with meeting the community's expectations, aspirations for public education of their students. And whereas school board members are entrusted with the guardianship and wise expenditure of scarce tax dollars and they are responsible for maintaining and preserving buildings, grounds, and other areas of school district that the community has put their trust in. And whereas school board members are responsible for providing leadership that ensures a clear, shared vision of public education for their schools, that sets high standards for the education of all students and requires the effective and efficient operation of their districts. And whereas school board members adopt policies that give voice to leadership and employ a superintendent to administer board policy and are responsible for the regular monitoring of the district's performance and compliance with policies. And whereas the board members elected to the school board positions deserve recognition and thanks for their countless hours of volunteer service to the public and public education and the students of our state. And whereas the Pima County School Superintendent's Office recognizes and supports our county's school board members. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors recognizes the hard work and dedication of our county's school board members and hereby proclaims the month of January 2024 to be School Board Recognition Month and urges all citizens to join us in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members and in working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's students. Passed and adopted this 23rd day of January 2024.
I would just like to thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a big honor for our office. We help the governing board members with their elections and we run their elections, but the tireless work, and there's many, there's approximately 80 of them in our county and more with our different schools. The amount of hours that they put in with the constituents is really daunting. It really is with emails and phone calls. And so this is for you guys 100% and everything that you've done and that you do for our counties, we truly appreciate the work that you all do. It's very, very important work and we congratulate you. Thank you very much. Please, if you'd like to introduce yourself and say a couple words.
Thank you. Sadie Shaw, TUSD Governing Board. I just want to thank the people because without you coming to the call to the audience, I wouldn't be able to do my job correctly because I love to hear from you all. So thank you and I'll see you at the board meeting.
Edward Buster Vale, Unified School District Governing Board. Just happy to be here and represent not only our great community, our school district, outstanding educators, and each one of those outstanding students that we have.
Good morning. Ted Rodriguez, Governing School Board Member for Sunnyside Unified School District. Thank you for having us. Thank you for acknowledging us and we're here to do more in 2024.
Edgar Bustamante from Sunnyside School District Governing Board. Let everybody know that being a board member is not a job, is considered a responsibility. Thank you.
Ramon Soltero, Superintendent with Aho Unified School District, representing our Governing Board, Aho Red Raiders. Thank you very much, Superintendent Williams, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're very grateful. And on a side note, our cheerleading team that started this year became champions this past weekend in Phoenix, the Aho Red Raiders Cheerleading Team. So onward and upward, right?
Aloha, Valer Merrell, TUSD Governing Board. I want to just say thank you very much. It's an honor to be of service to our community and to the TUSD community. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Amy Kraus. I am on the Catalina Foothills Unified School District Governing Board and I'm privileged to represent that board here today and to thank all of you for this honor. I think the two proclamations today go hand in glove. Of course, the work of the governing board is centered on student, student achievement and that's why we all do what we do. And so I want to shout out to our teachers, of course, and fellow board members, Board of Supervisors, thank you so much.
No, I just want to thank you all for your service and for a retired school board member and for the thousands of us that are out there. Thank you for your continued service. This is, I think people forget that this is volunteer service. I remember I'd, you know, called to the audience, people say, "Well, and you know, you should give your salary, you know, you should give what you get paid from TUSD back." I'm like, "You can have it." You don't get, it's a volunteer service. So thank you all for your passion and dedication to the children in our schools.
All right. Next, we have on addendum number one, item two, presentation of proclamation to Dr. Cherry Meeks, President, and Amelia Kramer, Vice President, NAACP Tucson Chapter. Dr. Tanya Strozer, Director, TUSD African American Student Services. Larry Starks, MPA and PA President of Tucson Juneteenth Festival. Pastor Grady Scott and Freedom Marshall, Director of the Dunbar Pavilion and proclaiming the month of January 2024. And Pastor Scott was also on the chair or the lead for the Martin Luther King Day Parade and Celebration. So thank you for that. And then Freedom Marshall is the Director of the Dunbar Pavilion, proclaiming the month of February 2024 to be Black History Month in Pima County. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item passes unanimously. And if those of you that are here for this proclamation can join me in the front, that Yeah, now hold up that. All right. Whereas in 1920, does anyone else want to read it?
Sure.
Okay, come on.
People are sick of hearing this.
Oh, you need my question? No, I'm good. Never miss an opportunity to get on the microphone. Whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, an Omega Psi Phi man, a Harvard scholar, established the observance in a celebration of African American history. And since 1976, Black History Month has been recognized nationally in February. And whereas Black History Month celebrates the many vital achievements and contributions of African Americans in shaping our country, our society, and our culture, the national theme of 2024 is African Americans and the Arts. And whereas the observation of Black History Month provides us an opportunity to gain a deeper understanding of African American history and intro and creating modern American democracy, my apologies, and, these are a lot of whereases. Whereas we must acknowledge and pay tribute to the generations of individuals who struggled with great adversity, risked their lives for justice, fought a fight that at times seemed impossible to win, and continue to strive for equity and the American dream. And whereas African Americans are engaged throughout our society as our friends and neighbors, scholars, teachers, business operators, community leaders, and contributors to their quality red lives. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continuing need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideas. And whereas Pima County is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans to our community and throughout our state and nation. Now therefore it resolve that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of February 2024 to be Black History Month in Pima County and encourages all Pima County residents to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and to continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Thank you. Thank you.
On behalf of the Celebration Committee for the
On behalf of the Celebration Committee for the Martin Luther King Weekend, want to thank the Board of Supervisors and the residents of Pima County for keeping Dr. King's dream alive. My name is Grady Scott, the pastor of the Grace Temple Baptist Church and chairperson of the Martin Luther King Tucson Celebration.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Cherie Meeks, and I serve as the President of NAACP Tucson, and I just want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors, thank you so much to the community for being here. Black History Month is a celebration that we should think about beyond the month of February. We already know February is the shortest month of the year, but Black History is American history, and so we just want to encourage you all to think about the contributions that folks of African and African American descent have contributed to our communities. NAACP is especially committed to the elimination of race-based discrimination, and that's in education, in the justice system, in housing, in healthcare, and all of these areas that we engage with on a regular basis. We especially want to encourage you all to be active this year. We know that voting rights have not always been given as they should be to the Black community, and so we want to do everything that we can to make sure that we are educated, that we are aware, we're passing along information, but also that we're ensuring that it is accessible. And so we also want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors who will be hearing a recommendation later on the agenda for voting, voting centers, and emergency ballot drop-off. NAACP Tucson does support those efforts, so thank you for making voting and keeping our communities involved and being a part of everything that we do. Thank you.
Sorry. I'm good.
Good morning. My name is Freedom Marshall, Executive Director of the Dunbar Pavilion. I bring you greetings. It is an honor to be here. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors and everyone in the community. I did all what Dr. Meeks said. The Dunbar Pavilion is that hub where we appreciate, we celebrate our history and cultivate the future of the African American community in Tucson and greater southern Arizona, and we work collectively to make sure we bring awareness that it isn't just a month, but we are part of American history, so thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Tanya Strozer. I'm the Director of African American Student Services in TUSD. I want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors for this proclamation, and also want to encourage you to visit our TUSD website. We have a website that will be launching at the end of this month where we provide Black History activities for parents to do with their children, also for teachers to do with their students, and also for just children to do by themselves. So we encourage you to celebrate our phenomenal history, 365, wait, this year, 366 days out of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Lee an opportunity to read that, even though we don't have anyone to present it to here, she's going to be presenting it at a community event, so.
Whereas Jeff Pachura became the Northwest Fire District's first fire chief in November of 1988 and served in that position for 24 years, and whereas during this time, Chief Pachura led the expansion of the fire district to serve the growing community, and whereas Chief Pachura retired from Northwest Fire District in 2012, yet continued his career in service with the Stockton, California Fire Department, Sedona, Arizona Fire District, and as a Public Safety Advisor to the City of Tucson, and whereas Chief Pachura flew Air Tactical Group Supervisor, quote, "Our air attack missions over Arizona and several other states for decades," and his actions helped save countless homes, unknown acres of natural habitat, and protected the lives of thousands of wildland firefighters working on the front lines. And whereas on July 10th, 2021, Jeff Pachura was one of the individuals who died in a plane crash near Wikiup, Arizona while battling the Cedar Basin Fire. Pachura was working on a contracted assignment with the U.S. Forest Service at the time of the incident. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisor hereby proclaims Thursday, January 25th, 2024 to be Chief Jeff Pachura Day, and on this day encourages all citizens of Pima County to join by expressing gratitude for Jeff's service, commitment to the greater good, and all that he taught others over the years, passed and adopted this 23rd day of January 2024.
Thank you, and if you read that in the form of a motion, I'll second it.
I so move.
Yeah, thank you. A motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously, so when we get to that item, I'll just.
Circle it.
Take out, take out nine.
All right.
Thank you so much. So now we're on to a call to the public, and citizens attending the meeting shall observe rules of propriety, decorum, and good conduct, and any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or becomes boisterous while addressing the board may be removed by the Sergeant-at-Arms if directed by the Chair. Such person may be barred from further audience before the board. Unauthorized remarks from the audience stomping of feet, whistling yells, and similar demonstrations shall not be permitted by the Chair who may direct offenders from the hearing room. With that, we have 11 speakers, so every speaker will have three minutes. Anastasia Satakas, Robert Royce, and Don Hales are our first three speakers.
Good morning and Happy New Year, everybody. All right, so first items first, regarding items on the agenda number seven and number 12 for Jan Lesher's salary adjustment, that needs to be a heavy no. She was happy with accepting her last salary, she's, in fact, she said, "I am at peace with the salary being offered in April 2022," when she was being offered $231,000 or $260,000. I think that's more than enough for an individual to be doing a job, especially since hundreds of millions of dollars from this board have been given away to illegals and other projects that should not have been given away, including building purchases with friends and family members. The next one I want to address more importantly is line item number 18 regarding some sort of emergency voting. There's no emergency. We don't need an emergency to have an actual voting location where people can go in person, vote in person, cast their ballot, and be done. Dropping off ballots is really not something that we need to deal with anymore. There's no emergency, there's no necessity for it, we just need to do one day, hand count, and be done with our elections. I'm failing to understand why that they need to make this, number one, a racial issue, and number two, I don't believe that we even need to have another visual of an election steal in this county any longer. We want paper ballots, we want one-day voting and hand counting. I think people in this county are more than intelligent enough to be able to go and cast their vote, and they can drop it off at an elections office, or they can drop it off at their local place of voting, where they can go and cast their ballot. I don't think it's necessary. I think this thing with you guys wanting to make this some sort of inequitable option is not correct either, and I think you're discounting the people of Pima County and being able to go and handle their own voting by themselves without having any sort of emergency declared, so I am here to tell you, not ask, but tell you, that there is no emergency and to only do one day, one ballot, one vote, with no early drop-off, and there is no emergency.
Robert Royce?
Robert Royce, I've been hearing the F-word a lot lately, and even in this room, by F-word, I'm talking about fascism. Not all forms of authoritarian rule are fascism. We have our own American history of authoritarian rule. America's first political party, the Federalist Party, was a corrupt entity. How corrupt? What is corruption? When Alexander Hamilton sat down as Treasury Secretary in Washington's first cabinet, the first idea he had was to redeem all the worthless promissory notes that had been paid for revolutionary services to soldiers, for goods, worthless paper, chestful of it all over the country, he decided it was all going to be redeemed for dollars. But first, he told all his friends, and the members of Congress and all of Hamilton's friends went running across the country before anyone could figure out what was going on, and they were buying all of this worthless paper for 10, 15, 20 cents on the dollar. Then they introduced the bill to redeem it all after people had been ripped off. We're talking about widows, orphans, disabled veterans, were all robbed by that first Congress, by the Federalist Party. Jefferson and Madison were appalled, and they authored a bill to give half of the proceeds to the original owners and half to the speculators, but it went down. How, the Federalist Party was an authoritarian organization. How authoritarian? Well, their last great deed was the Sedition Act, which made it illegal to criticize the government in any way, shape, or form. Allies of Jefferson were thrown into dungeons, there was no hole deep enough, or dirty enough, or smelly enough for the Jeffersonians, so federalism is our own form of corruption, our original party corruption, unbelievable corruption, and authoritarianism. People were rotting in jails for erecting liberty poles. Not all forms of authoritarianism is fascism. We don't need a fancy European word for authoritarianism. We have our own history right here in America, dating back to the first days of our Constitution, it's called federalism. It was corruption, it was authoritarian, it was American as apple pie. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Hales, followed by Phoebe Robertson, Corey Stevens, and Lori Moore.
Don Hales, Happy New Year.
Did you want to get a little closer to the mic?
I'm good.
Okay, can't really hear you as well.
Okay. I'd like to say thanks to Kaylee bringing snow today. We all love those dogs, and it's a great way to start the meeting, but I wonder how the dogs and the cats are doing in the border towns, Nagales, Lukeville, where they're selling children. How about the many migrant camps all around the country, including Tucson? How are the dogs and the cats doing? We should interview the dogs and see how they're doing, how they like what's going on, instead of the politicians laser-focused on the border. Agenda seven and 12, already spoken to, about vote solid no. With respect, Pima County has the highest tax rates, the highest crime rates, and the worst road conditions in the state. I get it, it's difficult to attract business, but Tucson really does get a gold star attracting people into the area, and I'm not sure where they're going to get the jobs for these millions of immigrants. Does this count as tourism income? And the monthly financial update shows a net budget short. It looks like it's up around $10 million for the major items. Can we, the people, now expect tax increases? Vote no on seven and 12. And 18, Agenda 18, March 19th Presidential Preference Election, proposed early ballot drop-off sites and emergency voting locations. No need for emergency, as already stated. The Recorder's Office has used only three locations in the past, and they've added, they've secured an additional seven, and there won't be, is there even a need for a March 19th Presidential Preference? Problems with early voting and drop-off are everywhere, the world is laughing at us. The Iowa caucus was all paper ballots, and they did it in a day in a winter storm. We want paper ballots, one-day voting, and no drop-off locations, period. Thank you.
Phoebe Robertson?
My name's Phoebe Robinson, I'm speaking to something that's not on the agenda. My parents, we were all here in the early 50s, had several businesses, and then in 1998, I purchased my own property in the Flowing Wells area. As time marches on, of course, things change, but I'm finding that my neighborhood is being devaluated by the current code enforcement laws of Pima County. Now, I had the pleasure of speaking to a gentleman in Cochise County who retired as head of the code enforcement there, and I've been unable to find the mechanism by which we can bring the code enforcement for Pima County up to the standards of those of Cochise County. There, they have regulation that all vehicles on the property have to be licensed. Okay, and running. Okay, there is a code regarding dilapidated fences. Pima County has no such thing. So now, in my property, when I walk up to the end of the street, there's a gentleman, who's a chef, who buys and sells cars at an auction, that's fine, so he put up shade things, shade covering on his fence to hide the cars. Then we go, continue down to the end of the block, we have a house that, they found some old dilapidated fence that was peeling, and propped it up with rocks against another bad fence behind it, and that's called good by code enforcement. So then you go up and go around the corner again, and you find another property with just an old fence with some rubber, those metal slats stuck into it. So what I'm finding is that, we don't have a neighborhood now, we're having, because of the policies and practices of code enforcement, we're finding all these fences and things that are really inappropriate to the neighborhood, and what I'm understanding is that the local policy and procedure is that they can pick and choose which items of the complaints that they decide to enforce, so there might be some favoritism there, and local policy is evidently set by the office. If you see it, ignore it, if you're driving by something that's obviously dilapidated, falling down, and in shambles, do not cite it. So I've been trying to find out, and been referred around the Mulberry Bushes, to how to get a mechanism in place to bring the code enforcement standards for Pima County up to the standards of Cochise County. One quick example, because I know my time's up, and it's hard to explain all this, but Kevin has, Kevin Daly has the sample properties for you.
Thank you. Ma'am.
10 years ago, the people died.
You can send us an email.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I try to keep everyone to the same period of time, so we appreciate it.
Did I just finish?
You can send.
The people died 10 years ago, property owners have changed, the vehicles are still there because of code enforcement. Rushing and Sons will do personal property removal.
Thank you.
I don't think they're allowed to even tell the people.
Lori Moore, or, I'm sorry, Corey Stevens. Right? Yeah, I moved it. Yeah. So if I can ask you to pull the mic closer, because the recording isn't picking up most of what's being said, thanks.
Is that better?
Okay. Okay.
Good morning. As per pima.gov website, the working relationship between the board and the county administrator is described as that of a board of directors and a CEO. The constituency, the taxpayer, those who voted you into office, would then be considered the president of the company. Here we are today, presented with an agenda item from Matt Hines to increase the salary of the CEO. By what metric has the need for this increase been determined? As per salaries from gov salaries dot com, Pima County rates number six in the country for top-paying employer at $220,000. ZipRecruiter lists the national average for county administrator as $106,942. Then we turn to performance as a metric. The county budget has skyrocketed year over year. Property acquisitions eerily similar to that of the previous administrator, Chuckleberry, who amassed numerous properties from friends. I have before me the state treasury user revenue funds that are generated from our highway user revenue funds. And this report states that about $115 million are generated from that, and yet the county administrator shows those revenues of about $48 million. I would say that our roads are in desperate need of repair. So I would like to know, where are the rest of those dollars? Because our roads need some repair. It would seem to me that maybe those funds go into a general fund. And when I speak to my constituency, they're telling me that our roads need repair. Then we have the issue with Catholic Community Services. And I understand that they have $16 million in their reserve fund, yet as per the county administrator, we're told that the SSP funds are going to last only until about the end of February, and that we might be concerned that we have to dip into general funds to continue the Asili program. And I think my constituency is concerned. And I don't think we should have to dip into general funds to propagate what's going on at our border. And so my constituency is concerned. And I think that if we're considering a raise for the county administrator, that we should look at these metrics. And that I don't think that the taxpayers, who are struggling to pay their rent, their mortgage, and when we have homeless people on the streets, that we shouldn't be concerned with giving you a raise. We should be concerned with giving our taxpayers a raise. And that we should be concerned with giving the citizens of Pima County a raise.
Okay. Thank you. I let you go a little longer, because we didn't hit the timer right on time, so. Lori Moore, and after Ms. Moore, Billy Peard, Stephen Wilcox, and Suzanne Teraba.
Good morning. My name is Lori Moore. I live in District 1. I am a former elementary and middle school teacher. Great teachers are a blessing. They set the bar high, and they know how to motivate kids to meet that standard. It is a God-given talent, and I have worked with many great teachers. Some kids, however, do not thrive where they are, and for them, they have a choice. It is the empowerment scholarship account. Parents can shop around for a good fit for their child. Here are some reasons to shop around. Multiplication facts should be memorized by the second grade. Cursive writing by the third grade. Are there small groups for reading instruction, or is your child sitting in front of a computer? That is babysitting, not instruction. Does your child ever study for tests? Does your child dress out for PE, or is it optional that they don't change their clothes because they don't want to sweat? Has your child been socially promoted without doing anything more than showing up? Does your child's school have furries who violate the dress code for attention? Furries need to be home with their owners, eating cat food, and going to the groomers. Does your child's school elevate the psychiatric disorder of gender dysphoria? So that the right to privacy has been taken away from every female? Have boys competing in girls' sports robbed your daughters of fair play? Does your child's school spend more time worrying about their latest pronoun, but cannot define the word pronoun? I encourage parents to visit their child's classroom, especially during civics and family life instruction. Your tax dollars are paying for teachers, and you are allowed to hear what they are teaching. If the classroom is organized and learning, congratulations. But if the teacher looks at you like, "Welcome to my jungle," you have options. Check out the empowerment scholarship account website. Schools that are run like a business do not play these games, and these schools do exist. Do not let Governor Hobbs take away this right from your child. This state is not losing money. Thank you.
Billy Peard?
Good morning. Billy Peard, I'm a resident of South Tucson, and I actually rise today in support of Agenda Item Number Five, I believe, of the Addendum Agenda, relating to an IGA between South Tucson and Pima County, relating to its potential grant to support South Tucson's public safety workers and firefighters. As a local resident, my observation, my experience these past few years has been that South Tucson, although it contains only about 0.5 of 1% of the countywide population, bears a much larger burden proportionally with regard to the opiate and fentanyl epidemics that our county is experiencing, a much larger burden that our community bears in terms of day-to-day overdoses, day-to-day small crimes, and other fires and arson, small arsons, and things of this nature that have resulted from this epidemic we're experiencing. And the question may arise later in the discussion today, why we, as a county, are supporting our smallest municipality with a relatively substantial grant fund? And I think that's perhaps not all the answer, but I think part of the answer, that our small community is taking on quietly a lot of the responsibilities and duties that have become essential in the past few years, as we've all struggled with this epidemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Wilcox?
Greetings to the board. Chair Garhala. As a preamble and introduction, a significant proportion of my life income has been made doing manual labor with Mexicans, citizens or not. By the way, I've lived for a couple of years in South Tucson years ago, and I just drove through a few weeks ago. A lot of the businesses are still there, that were there in the '80s. At the end of last session, Supervisor Christie asked some sharp questions of Pima County officials. I couldn't help but notice how careful were the answers. I realized almost immediately that we are constructing a complete humanitarian people-intake, transport, and housing system, invisible to the public, and resistant to discovery or publicity. It uses the bus and airline systems. Schools and other public property, hotels are leased and purchased. If the border were sealed today, tens of thousands of people would suddenly be without a job. Border traffic will eventually be dialed down, but the secretive people-processing system will remain. Used for what? The homeless will be fed into it. No new jail. The old jail will become crowded and unsafe. Lower-level offenders will be processed into this humanitarian system. The federal government is more than happy to feed money to Pima County so it can continue building this extra-legal system. Please stop taking the money. I would like to be a humanitarian person, but I can't find any of these people. This whole thing is counterfeit humanitarianism. Thank you.
Suzanne Teraba? Followed by Ross Polo, and our last speaker is Cesare Aguirre. If anyone else would like to submit a card, please do that. Thank you.
Good morning, board. Item seven and 12, a raise for Jan Lesher. Her current salary is $260,000, with $550 a month car allowance, is what I understand. Why would you give a raise when you have, looking at deficits? Of course, I just heard, people do their homework better than I do around here, but I just don't understand why a raise is given, these illegal aliens. I call them illegal because they are coming across our border illegally. They are aliens because they are alien to our country. They're alien to our culture. And they get raises. Oh, my goodness. They get free housing, food, board, transportation, wherever they want. Well, anyway. Maricopa County pays their administrator $290,000, from what I understand, $30,000 difference. But Maricopa County has Phoenix, which is huge, and all the outlying areas of Phoenix, much bigger than Tucson in our outlying area. How can you justify a raise? So please, vote no. Item 18, Presidential Preference Election. Let's face it, there is no hiding the fact that election fraud is real. It's real in mail-in ballots. You lose chain of custody the moment that ballot goes into a post box. It's gone. You don't know where it's going to go, really. We people of the United States, and I think the majority of us, want paper ballots, one-day voting, and hand-counting. No drop-off locations. So much fraud. I worked as a poll worker last time, and those little machines, I'm sorry, I think they're still hooked up to the internet. In one way or another, they can be. And it's just wrought with fraud. Thank you.
Ross Polo?
So the wife and I went to Williamsburg, Virginia, Colonial Williamsburg, to check off her bucket list, an item. So we had a very early flight, 5:20 in the morning, so we got there at 4 o'clock to do all the imaginations you have to do. And to no surprise, to no surprise, there were illegals traveling all points USA lining up for flights. In fact, one of them came up to me, and she said, "¿Dónde está la puerta para San Francisco?" And she showed it to me on her phone. She had a better phone than me. Who's paying for her bill? You, the taxpayer. So I pointed her in the right direction, and she went off. Now we're in Williamsburg. The wife and I visit the chamber where the House of Burgess's resided, where Patrick Henry said, "Give me liberty, or give me death." We went a little further south, to Jamestown, the first British colony in 1607. A little further south, we went to Yorktown, where the battle, where that battle decided what a new nation would be, the United States of America. Now, the Virginia Peninsula, during the Civil War, bled. There was a lot of blood and treasure that was lost. I ask you, you think these people that came from all parts of the world have any idea what it costs to make the greatest nation in the world? I say you do not. Now, let me finish. By the way, we should have three minutes all the time, whether it's one or 50 people. "The stranger that liveth with thee in the land shall rise up over thee and shall be higher, and thou shall go down and be lower. He shall lend thee, and thou shalt not lend him. He shall be as the head, and thou shall be the tail." From the Good Book, Deuteronomy 28. Wake up!
Our last speaker, Cesare Aguirre?
Good morning, board members. Thank you. My name is Cesare Aguirre. I live in the city of South Tucson, and I am also a city council member in the city of South Tucson. I was, I just completed my first year this last November as a council member. And I am here today to speak in support of Item Number Five on the Addendum Agenda. So, like I mentioned, I've been on the board for just a little over a year now. And we've really, really been struggling with our fire department, to keep our fire department afloat, and to provide the services for our community. We've been very great, you know, very lucky up to this point, that we haven't had any crises or anything that has happened that we, in our city, that we haven't been able to cover with the fire department. And so we are looking forward and seeing that we are going to be really struggling to try to rebuild our fire department. Now, I would like to let you all know that you have many board members on the council today in South Tucson that are very dedicated to bringing in more revenue to the city, to increase our development, and to try to balance our budget. And what we are asking is for a hand-up, not a hand-out. We would like some support moving forward, so that we can continue to work on the, to build on the work that we've been doing, to create more revenue in our city, to bring in more development, and to recreate, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that, so that we can keep the culture of South Tucson intact, while bringing in more development and more revenue, and supporting our current citizens in South Tucson. Like Billy Peard mentioned earlier about the struggles that we face with the opioid epidemic, we are hit very, very hard. And it's something that's on a bigger level and bigger scale than what we can do as a city. But we are doing everything in our power to address all of these issues. And like everybody knows, it comes down to the money. We live in a country where it boils down to the dollar at the end of the day, and we need to do what we need to do in our city to make sure that we're bringing in that revenue, and that we're taking care of our citizens. And so I plead with you all, this is an emergency for the city of South Tucson. I plead with you all to approve Item Number Five, and give us the support that we need so that we can continue the work, and hopefully in a few years, you will see the fruits of this partnership. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's the end of the call to the audience. And if my colleagues wish to ask staff to review a matter, ask that a matter be put on a future agenda, or respond to a criticism. Okay. We'll go ahead and move on, then. Thank you, and thank you to all of you who came. So we're going to skip executive session, because that's a time certain at 12 noon. Board of Supervisors sitting at other boards. Item Number Eight is the Grant Acceptance, Environmental Protection Agency to provide El Vado Wash Storm Drainage Improvement Project, 1.2 million. And there's a tax levy. That's a two-year term. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. And I want to thank Congressman Garhala for the funds, and for Deputy County Administrator DeBonus, and all of the departments that have been involved in asking and continuing to advocate for this project. It's really important. Sitting as the Board of Supervisors, Item 19- Sitting as the Board of Supervisors, item nine, approval of the consent agenda, except for item nine. I'll go ahead and move that.
Second.
A motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item number 10 is unfinished business outside agency program funding. This is an item put forward by Supervisor Hines. Did you want to introduce the item, Supervisor Hines, or?
Sure. I'm just a little confused. I think we had another executive session. What happened there?
Right. Well, we're just going to do executive session all at the same time.
All at the same time.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Okay, so this, actually, this item that we've been talking about for, I think, a few meetings now.
Do you want to move the mic a little closer to you?
Sorry, my bad.
Great. Thank you.
The whole mask thing. But we have been talking about some increases to outside agency funding for a few meetings now. And this was something we tasked to our staff to develop recommendations on. I think they've done a really amazing job, frankly. And I believe we should adopt the recommendations that are brought to us by the county administrator and her staff. And that I would like to make in the form of a motion.
I have a motion. I have some I have some questions about the process. I'll go ahead and second for sake of discussion. So having been with a nonprofit that applied for this funding every year of the, you know, 25 years that I was with the program, one of the concerns that I have is I'm very comfortable with all of the recommendations, B, C, and D. I think that those, the changes make sense. Aligning the outside agencies with our policies to reduce generational poverty is, makes total sense to me. And develop modifications and changes to program categories and structures to align that. And then D is changes to the progress for outside agency will be implemented the beginning of the new award cycle. And then the annual budget for outside agencies is going to be increased. One of the concerns that I have is that we're going to have a budget conversation. And I do think that we may want to hold off on increasing outside agency funding until we have a better handle on what's happening with our financials. We can always add funds, especially to those programs that, most of the time, when, let's say, you ask for a $50,000 grant, you're awarded $26,000. So it, I mean, I feel like there's an opportunity for us to do that. And I'm also not sure how much attractions and tourism needs additional funding. I mean, if I had my druthers, I would probably just put that all into outside agency, the workforce. But with that, item A is the one I have the greatest question on. So it says, "A shift from total cost reimbursement to initial and partial advancement of funds." I'm wondering if there is a reason, either with the amount of funding, is it a county requirement, a state requirement, or federal requirement, that we don't just do partial, like the advancement of funds? So let's say you have a $50,000 award, and then you're awarded a fourth of that amount every quarter. Most of these agencies are agencies that have been part of our outside agency program for decades. They have consistent track record, and they do provide data in order to justify the reimbursement. The concern that I have is many of these programs are small nonprofit programs. And so it's difficult to hire and keep qualified staff when you don't know where the funding might come from. So if you have, let's say, arivaca, emergency clothing and food, and part of the funding, the $53,000 that they're awarded, part of that funding is a staff member. But you have to draw down the funds in order to pay for the staff member as opposed to having it consistently provided upfront. I'm just wondering if we could explore the reasons for why we can't move to a straight payment model as opposed to having cost reimbursement model? So those, I have issues with A, and then the last item. And then, yes. Administrator Lesher, did you want to speak to it? And then I'll call on Supervisor Christie.
I can respond to questions regarding any issue perhaps at the end.
Okay, great. Supervisor Christie.
You expressed concerns, Madam Chair. How do you want to go about addressing them?
Well, I'm just wondering if we could have finance sort of explain to us why we couldn't just do a quarterly dispersment? Because every agency has to do a quarterly report, and they have to justify all of their expenses. And so I think it would make more sense and be more stable for each of these agencies to just receive your quarterly allotment. If you look at the agencies that we are funding, the vast majority expend their funds before the last quarter. And so I don't think it's an issue of being accountable for the funding. I just feel like it would be, it would provide more stability to our agencies if we could do quarterly dispersments of a, you know, set amount.
Madam Chair, is this something that could be answered today? Or is it better to perhaps put it off until we get a memorandum from the agencies that will be affected by this?
Well, I don't think-
To answer your question.
Yeah, I don't think the agencies would be, would have a concern. I think that they would probably welcome the consistency. I think the question would be with our finance and that response. But to your point, I really do think that this item, I would prefer waiting on it until we get a full presentation of financials.
Are you putting that in the form of a substitute motion? If so, I'll second it.
Okay. I'll do that. Supervisor Hines, and then Supervisor Lee.
Thank you. I actually like the idea of the quarterly dispersments. I think that makes sense. And this recommendation came to us after I brought it forward from staff. So I don't know that we need to put this off, especially in light of the fact that the outside agency funding program has not been changed in over a decade. I really think that that's completely inappropriate, and we need to frankly do a little bit more than we're doing here. So I would ask that we simply give direction to do the quarterly distributions, as you've discussed, because I think it makes sense for them. It will be much more stable for the agents, for these agencies, and that we move forward.
I just want to make sure that we don't have any, like, negative repercussions. So that's my hesitation. Supervisor Lee.
One of the things that I would suggest, and I, by the way, agree that the quarterly funding makes sense. But I would note that we have passed the Prosperity Initiative. And with that, I would suggest that we relook at the agencies that actually fit within that Prosperity Initiative. And I would recommend that we postpone a vote on, at this point, and wait until we know more about our finances. And also, it's mid-year. So I would recommend that we hold off entirely and make that recommendation for '24, '25.
When does the window open up for applications? Does anyone, I'm out of the loop. I forgot. Yeah.
Chair Gijalva, Supervisor Lee, we just are in the process of closing that, the next cycle, right? So we just finished that process.
But, yeah.
Administrator Lesher.
None of these are contracts that would go into effect prior to July 1. That these are for next year's contracts. So I think that for the, since all of this is proposed, as I say, to start with, the next cycle, July 1, I think if the Board wished to continue this for one meeting so that we could get additional information about whether there are procurement requirements as opposed to simply historical Board precedent, we can come back to you with that before we need to finalize these grants going into the new fiscal year.
And so, but they've already put in their applications, these, the agencies. So I would not recommend any changes to the agencies that have been awarded. This would be for the following, right? The following cycle. And then to answer the point about the agencies and whether they fit into the Prosperity Initiative, a lot of that will be dictated by how the application is adjusted. So for example, when I first started with Teen Court and applying for funding, Teen Court was under General Services. And then they sort of added a category that was youth. And now it's youth and family. And so you tweak those things and ask for specifics. And then many of the agencies, there's a weighted count if you're providing services in rural areas. So if you look at a lot of the funding that we have, a lot of it is rural, or at least will serve rural communities as well. Because I think that that's really important. And we also understand that the farther out you get from the center of our location, the harder it is to access services. So I do feel like they do a really good job of trying to prioritize. And I think that weaving in the Prosperity Initiative into the goals will make sense. And you'll see a lot of programs and agencies adjust their programming to meet that need. Did you, Supervisor Christie?
With this change in procurement versus reimbursement, it would be helpful, I think, if we would have a look at it from a legal standpoint. Is this going to affect anything legally in the procedures and the policies that might be, come in conflict? And that's one more reason I think we should continue this until we have more information.
Yeah. So if, I understand your concern, Supervisor Hines, since the window is just closed and this will actually be something that we're considering, not for this upcoming fiscal year, but the following. I think that, as long as, I just want to really clearly understand what any potential negative issues we might have with procurement with going to a straight model, like the dispersment model that we're talking about. I know a lot of other agencies, including state agencies, do that. And it provides so much more stability. And when we look at the agencies that we're talking about here, the funding from Pima County is a fraction of theirs. And it also, I think that stability of having that funding and knowing that it's coming is going to allow for many of these organizations, like Arizona Youth Partnership, they have a rural middle-after-school program. And it's, you know, $21,000. But knowing that that amount is going to come, regardless of who comes in the door and when they come in, I think will add a lot of potential for growth and be able to add on to programs. So if that's okay, if, since there was a motion and a second, maybe we just move this to one meeting, so February, bring it back February 6. If that's okay with the maker of the motion. And so we have a motion and a second to bring this item back to the six, Supervisor Scott.
Chair Gijalva, I didn't understand the motion as continuing it for just one meeting. I thought we were continuing it until we had a better picture of the overall budget. And, you know, if you go to, if you go to Section D, it says, "The annual budget for outside agency programs be increased by 12.5% in the next fiscal year. Both community, workforce, and development, and attractions and tourism will receive an initial increase of 10% for fiscal year 2024, '25." And then if you look at B, to the point that Supervisor Lee made earlier, "To ensure that the outside agency award process aligns with the policies set forth in Policy E36.2, staff will draft proposed modifications to Board of Supervisor Policy E36.1." So I'd prefer to continue it until we get closer to talking about the overall budget for next year. Because I think, I don't know that we're going to know any more in February, two weeks from now, than we know right now, unless I'm missing something.
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gijalva, Supervisor Scott, if we're looking, there's two pieces of it. If you'd like us to come back with initial documentation or recommendations, potentially, at least information regarding the legal, the procurement, you know, those kinds of policy determinations, we can simply provide that as an update to the Board in a memorandum. And then happy to bring back the item as we get into, I believe, April 26 is when you'll be receiving a budget, the tentative budget from the county administrator. We could look at earlier in April, perhaps, to finalize this document, or how much you'd like to put into the budget.
And if we were to move forward in that direction and wait until April, would we be able to have the categories on what it might look like if we're aligning this funding with the Prosperity Initiative? Would that give staff enough time to be able to bring all of those things together?
Yes. I'm not looking at them.
I'm looking in the back row. No one's nodding, so I'm just wondering.
I nod. Yes, thank you.
Eventually, yes. Okay. So then what would be the first meeting? Either April 2 or April 16. Do we want to go with?
Amending the original substitute motion from February to April, the second meeting in April.
So the 16th. All right. I'll go ahead and accept that adjustment. So this is the substitute motion to bring this item back on the 16th. And then I'm assuming, as you mentioned, Administrator Lesher, you'll send a memo out regarding some of the suggestions, procurement issues, so we could frame this a little differently if we need to.
That is correct.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Item passes unanimously. And thank you, Supervisor Hines, for bringing this forward. As someone who relied on this funding, it's really critical to the programs in our community. So just trying to make it easier and more accessible, and I appreciate that. All right. Okay, so we have item 18, time certain at 10:30. We're like five minutes late. I apologize. All right. So this one is a 2024 Presidential Preference Election, Early Ballot Drop-Off Sites and Emergency Voting Locations. This would be, can we go ahead and have a presentation? We, I see our county recorder, Karbala Kasadas-Kelly, is here.
Thank you, Chair Gijalva and Board. The Presidential Preference Election, which is March 19, is a political party election that the county facilitates. Because it is a political party election, only members of the political party can participate. And the only two political parties that are participating are the Democratic Party and the Republican Party. Anyone who is registered as no party designated or otherwise known as independent will not be able to participate in that election. So a third of all Arizona voters are not participating. Again, this is only going to have the presidential candidates. The reason that it's called a Presidential Preference because it essentially, the results show which of these candidates Arizona prefers. And of course, their nominee is not designated until their party's national convention. And so it's a little bit of a confusion. We typically have a low participation rate with the Presidential Preference Election. However, because our office is committed to providing opportunities for people to participate, especially in rural locations, we decided to expand the number of locations that we customarily had. In the past, historically, we would only have three locations opened, which would be our three main recorders' offices throughout the county, all of which are here, right in Tucson, the downtown office, the east side office, and our country club facility. But we have expanded to have up to 10 locations that are considered drop-off locations, and nine locations where we will be either offering early voting or emergency voting. However, we are limiting that because of the low participation rate. We are limited, limiting that to only a few days in each location. And so Exhibit A has the dates of those. And so you'll see a limited schedule. And again, this is to accommodate rural voters. We expanded in Vail. We have a location in Saguaro. Oro Valley, the southwest of Tucson, Sells, and Ajo. And so we are excited to see what the results of that are. Again, sometimes there's the argument, "Well, there's low participation. We don't need those locations." But we don't know if that's a self-fulfilling prophecy. Is it low because we're not there in the community? So we're going to, we're going to see what happens here. But this is in preparation for the presidential election cycle.
Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Christie.
Madam Recorder, there's, on the ballot, there's only going to be two choices, correct?
So if you are a member of the Republican Party, all of the Republican presidential candidates will be on there. And that is, you're essentially going to be voting for the electors. And so if you are Republican, you will only see the Republican presidential candidates. If you are Democratic, you will only see the Democratic. And this is only presidential, so there is no other candidates, no other issues or initiatives.
No other offices.
Nothing else. It is only for the president.
And if you would only be- And you would only be given that if you were a Republican?
Yes.
And the same applies, you'd only be given that if you're a Democrat?
Yes.
And there are no other issues or ballot issues or proclamations or anything of that? Just the presidential preference?
That is correct.
And to, in order to change this or to, to alter it or even do away with it, would it require legislative action by the, by the state legislature?
Yes, that is correct. Any changes to this type of, of election is decided by the state legislature.
So this board really has no control of approving or disproving the ability to have this, this preferential election? It's in the legislative body and realm?
Yes, that is correct. It is required by law. This body is only able to approve the ballot drop-off locations, which is the item that we have before you.
And basically, it's a closed primary essentially?
Essentially.
So the, again, the only way this could be modified, changed, or, or removed would have to be done by the legislature in Phoenix.
Supervisor Christie, Chair Gharhala, that is absolutely correct. We are, we have to offer this type of election. It is required by law. And we are simply following state law. And the only, again, the only decision that this board is making is to whether or not the ballot drop-off locations that our part, that our office has deemed necessary, whether or not you agree with that. Again, we are expanding to provide more locations in rural areas where people typically do have additional questions. And we're hoping to see a better turnout. But other than that, we are simply following the, the law.
Any other questions? Okay. So I'll go ahead and move approval of resolution number 2024-6.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Any additional discussion? And I appreciate the outreach. I think that it's move, you know, having locations on Ajo and Sales, Oro Valley, Vail, Saguaro, some areas, south and midtown and east and downtown. I think that, I'm hoping that we'll see a higher turnout because I think it's important. So appreciate that effort. A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Thank you. We do have some people here for item number 16. So if there isn't any objection, if we can go to that item, that's the Pima County Parklands Foundation, its unfinished business from last meeting to provide acquisition agreement and warranty deed for 311.56 acres of fee land. And the fund is open space special projects. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Go ahead Supervisor. I'll second.
Supervisor Christie seconds. Discussion.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I looked at this issue in depth and there's an interesting relationship between the Parklands Foundation and NRPR as far as its history, its bequeathments from private citizens, its dispensation of the assets of those bequeathments, who, who does them, who approves them, who monitors them. And they're basically designed to provide an avenue, an opportunity for the public to specifically direct the Parklands Foundation to support park issues in Pima County. And they have a whole host of projects that they've, they've done. And I think in essence, it's, it's kind of like the Friends of Awakayente or the Canoa Ranch, Friends of the Canoa Ranch. But it's a little bit more expansive that, than that because there is kind of a symbiotic relationship with the folks at NRPR. One of the issues that I had was that this 311 acres was donated by a family to the Parklands Foundation. And we are now going to spend taxpayer money to purchase those 311 acres. I would like to adjust this in this request for this agenda item, that the taxpayers in Pima County does not purchase the property, but instead the Parklands Foundation donates the property to Pima County. This is designed to enhance open space and natural habitat in the colossal cave area. But it's also part and parcel of accommodating something that we did several years ago in Green Valley. A developer had a golf course that had gone bankrupt some years before, and he couldn't do anything with it as far as development because of regulations. So instead, he donated almost 400 acres to Pima County for the development of a walking trail for the community of Green Valley. I see this as a, as a parallel. Why does a donation that's being given to enhance our parks have to be bought by the, by the people of Pima County? I'm, I would like to direct or at least bring to this board the idea and perhaps a recommendation that that 311 acres at over a million dollars of taxpayers' money not be purchased by Pima County, but be donated to Pima County.
Administrator Lesher.
Thank you. Chair Gharhala, we do have the president of the Parklands Foundation here, Mr. Mike Helen, believe if he would like to speak to that. We, this, they are a separate foundation, a separate entity. I don't know what authority we might have to direct someone to donate land, but if there's anybody who can speak to it is Mr. Helen.
Yes, thank you. My, my recollection of the situation in Green Valley was that the developer was in serious financial trouble and had to get out from under that land. And it was actually a benefit to him to give it to the county. A different set of facts applies to the land that was given to Parklands many years ago. And that was before I came on board. My understanding is that the Myers, Myers-Hausser family achieved both a series of tax write-offs because of the value of the land and got out from under paying property taxes on the land by giving it to the foundation. We, we actually, Supervisor Christie, have talked about what you're proposing in the past. The problem is I have a fiduciary responsibility to the foundation. We carry this land on our books at 1.3 million dollars, which was the value of the land at the time it was donated. I don't think it would be responsible of me to just disgorge from the foundation's assets something of that magnitude. The other situation is that the land is developable. We can sell it. We can sell it to contractor. We can sell it to somebody who wants to build homes. My understanding is that NRPR doesn't know much like that option. And that's why they want the land to make sure that doesn't happen. And I don't know if we can get more for it in the open market or not, but the transaction that is before you, it seems to me is fair for both parties.
Thank you. Any other questions? Supervisor Christie.
Well, it's not the only, we have like $220,000 in cash. But yeah, yeah, it is. Which is.
I'm sorry.
Which, which is why I feel I have a fiduciary obligation to the foundation not to just turn it over for nothing. Because I can't sell it.
You can sell it, but, so are you concerned that there might be some implications legally if you don't sell it?
I'm not a lawyer, but.
Would you be willing to wait for a, a legal opinion on that?
No.
I'm sorry. Chair Gharhala, Supervisor Christie, is, were you, what is the legal opinion you're requesting? Would it be to whether or not they can legally donate it?
Yes.
Oh, I think we could legally donate it. I don't have any issue with that.
Except if an organization has chosen not to.
I just don't think I want to.
Right. Understand. You had to try Supervisor Christie, but, but I, I think it's, it's an investment that is important for Pima County, the parcel's important for Pima County, the fact that we're going to acquire almost 7,000 acres of additional land that is state land that we can continue to protect the area makes sense to me. And so is there any other question? Otherwise.
I agree with.
Supervisor Christie, then Supervisor Lee.
I agree with everything you stated and I, and I concur with that. My only question is, if you have something that's really designed, like the Parklands Foundation to benefit Pima County and, and to enhance its recreation activities, would it not be better to donate that land to Pima County rather than taxpayers having to pay for it?
My final question, Mr. Helen, and I, you and I talked about this and you knew what I was struggling with.
Yeah, at some length, yeah.
Could you just give to the board what your plans or what you foresee, the plans with the proceeds of the sale for the Parklands?
Sure. Sure. I think I can speak for the board on this. We would put the money into CDs, interest-bearing investments, and draw down the interest on an annual basis and use the interest income to enhance park facilities in Pima County.
Thank you Supervisor Lee.
Thank you Chair Gharhala. Mr. Helen, would your board be willing to consider a price that is not at the appraised value and take the, the rest as a potential write-off as a donation?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to, I'd have to talk to them. You know, we, it's, we're a 501(c)(3) corporation. And, and while our mission is to enhance and support parks in Pima County, I, as the president and our board, still have what I consider to be a fiduciary responsibility to the organization. That's something we might have discussed once, but we have an appraisal. The appraisal is a couple of hundred thousand dollars less than what we're carrying in our books at. And when, when we were approached about doing this, I said, you know, run an appraisal and, you know, we'll, we'll take whatever, whatever it is. Two or three years ago, it would probably come in at 800,000, 900,000. Maybe two years from now, it comes back in at 1.3. So I don't, I don't think now is the time to try, try to restructure the deal.
Thank you. Any other quick Supervisor Christie.
Any, any possibility we could get a guarantee that the proceeds of the sale of the property will all go back into District 4?
No.
I, in our conversation Supervisor Christie, I did acknowledge that this is a District 4 property. And I did suggest that if there are some specific projects that you think would enhance the recreational activity of District 4, we're more than happy to look at it.
And just for the record, I want to personally and publicly thank Mr. Helen for his service, not only to the Parklands Foundation, but to the Merit Commission and, and to other Pima County entities and, and also for being so forthcoming with his answers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote please. This is for approval. Supervisor Christie.
Abstain.
Supervisor Heinz.
Yes.
Supervisor Lee.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Yes.
Chair Gharhala. Yes. Item passes 4-0 with one abstention. Thank you so much and thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Thank you. This is a really good, this is a really good investment. I'm really excited about it, I have to say publicly. I think it's, oh, the one thing I would like to ask is since we voted on this, can we update the map of our Pima County map, including this and the open space acquisitions? So, because we have a lot to be proud of, I think.
We'll do that.
Thank you. All right. So now we'll go, let's see. Jumping around here, I apologize. We have 14? Yeah. Yes. Okay. So now we'll move on to 14 on the regular agenda. This is a monthly financial update. Administrator Lesher.
Thank you very much Chair Gharhala. You have received some written documents, but we do, the director of our finance department, CFO, Ellen Moulton, will walk you through what you have before you and we would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Good morning Chair Gharhala Supervisors. You've received from Ms. Lesher the monthly financial report for November 2023. I would like to provide some highlights and then answer any of your questions. Currently, the, the revenue forecast for the general fund is stable. Property taxes are forecasted to be slightly under budget by 1.6 million. This is due to the settlement of the Southwest Gas lawsuit. We will, we are projecting to receive 428 million in general fund property tax revenues. The state, federal, and other department revenues are forecasted to come in slightly over budget by 1.6 million totaling 250 million dollars. These revenues come from a mix of sources. State shared sales taxes, vehicle license tax, transient lodging tax, also known as the hotel motel tax, interest income on pooled investments, overhead paid to the general fund from non-general fund departments, and some other sources. The third category of revenue is the general fund departmental revenues. These are also forecasted to be on budget at approximately 38 million. These general fund departmental revenues are revenues generated through departmental activities. These activities vary by department but include such things as licenses and permits, charges for services, rental property income, et cetera. For November, there are three departments who are forecasting to be more than half a million dollars over budget. These three departments have indicated through their forecast that they will be significantly over budget if nothing changes. These departments are the facilities management department, the sheriff's department, and public defense services. The facilities management department is forecasted to be over budget 645,000 dollars as of June. The majority of this overage is due to increased TEP electricity charges. As you know, as part of the 24 adopted budget, the board put aside 5 million dollars into an inflation contingency. With the period five forecast, finance completed a county-wide analysis of electricity payments and finances recommending through the county administrator a portion of the inflation contingency to be allocated to both facilities management and the sheriff's department to address the impact of the inflation related to electricity. For the sheriff's department, they are projecting to be over budget 4.5 million dollars. This is a significant increase from their first projection in August, about 2.4 million. Most of this overage is attributed to personnel, service costs, including 3.9 in overtime. Supplies are also projected to be over by roughly 1.5 million. The sheriff's finance staff and the finance and risk management team work closely together to monitor the expenditures for the sheriff's department. Sheriff Nano, Sheriff Nanos has instructed his management staff to monitor all of their expenditures. We meet regularly and monitor overtime through various reporting mechanisms. As discussed with facilities management, the sheriff has also been impacted by inflation. The sheriff was included in the countywide analysis on electricity. The sheriff was included in the countywide analysis on electricity as well as food and fuel. Finance is recommending a portion of the inflation contingency be allocated to both facilities and the Sheriff's Department to address the impact of inflation related to electricity, food, and fuel. The Public Defense Services is also forecasting to be over budget 1.6 million. This is an increase from the previous period. A majority of these costs are related to contract attorneys and the need to deal with vacant positions through hiring contracted labor. The non-general fund departments. There are four departments that are forecasted to be over budget at the end of the fiscal year and one department that will be under budget for revenue. Community workforce development, affordable housing. This is the first time you're seeing them on the forecast. They are currently forecasting to be over budget slightly under half a million dollars. This is primarily due to expenditures that were planned to occur in fiscal year 23, but are now occurring in fiscal year 24. The Human Resources Health Benefits Trust is forecasted to be over budget 2.6 million. This is due to persistent increased costs for medical and pharmaceutical claims. The ITD Enterprise Software is also projected to be over budget by approximately 1.8 million. The Microsoft Enterprise Licensing Agreement costs have increased substantially, as we have reported earlier. Additionally, subscription costs for several modules for the new ERP system were not included in the budget as the as they were not available when the budget was being created. These projections are estimates, and we work every month to try and close that gap to make sure that we have an accurate number there. The final department is the Pima County Wireless Network for Period Five. PC Win is forecasting to be over budget 300,000 dollars, primarily due to unanticipated equipment purchases. These are one-time costs and should not be repeated in the the future years. The final department is transportation. Revenues for transportation are forecasted to be 2.5 million dollars under budget. Arizona Department of Transportation has revised downward their highway user revenue projections. To accommodate this shortfall in revenue, transportation has taken steps to reduce expenditures while not impacting the delivery of the payment preservation program. Each of these departments has submitted a budget remediation plan, which was included in your packet, to address the issues identified in their financial forecast. Overall, period five indicates a slightly negative position. We are seeing impacts of inflation through increased utility costs as well as increased costs in other areas. We expect these impacts to continue throughout the fiscal year. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions regarding the forecast or the individual departmental remediation plans.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question about the TEP expenditures. Last summer, I think it is, you sent a memo or a memo came to us indicating that the rates were going to be higher. And did did were there any accommodations in budgets? So we knew that the that the expenses were going to be higher. Did we put any additional funding into any of those departments? Or did how did that work out?
Supervisor or Chair Gahalva Supervisors, the the board set aside 5 million dollars in an inflation contingency to address specifically that and other inflationary pressures in the general fund.
But we didn't change their budgets. Like individual departments. We knew Facilities Management was going to be, you know.
Chair Gahalva, we did not change the budgets at that time. We have that 5 million dollar fund. For example, the next budget item, we are looking, we come then to the board and ask for slight small distributions of that 5 million to those departments to increase the budget at that time.
And so the assumption is now that we know what that expenditure is going to be for next fiscal year, we would adjust that. I just I what I don't like is seeing, you know, certain departments that are in the red. They have no control over those expenditures. And so since we know what those expenses are going to be next year, will we make modifications to those budgets to ensure that they don't look like they're in the red because of TEP expenditure?
Correct.
It's it's just a question because I'll give you an example from our own budget. The first year that we came into office, we had a budget that was set up. The next year, we made changes to it. If you look at our D5 budget, we've made changes the last two years. It still looks like we're in the negative in certain areas because the actual budget template doesn't change. We know that it's fine, but it just doesn't change. So I'm wondering if that's the same for every department.
Chair Gahalva Supervisors, as we put together the budget packet for 2025, we are taking into consideration the actual increase in costs related to electricity and some other budgetary or inflationary pressures. If we know and can calculate what those costs will be, we are including those in the departmental budgets. For example, the wastewater department, they can identify specifically how inflation is impacting some of their specific costs for chemicals, et cetera. Those were included in their 24 budget and are included in the various budgets.
Yeah, so like, for example, Facilities Management has been on this list significant like every time we've discussed it, but it has to do with TEP rates. It doesn't have to do with any other expenditures. So.
Chair Gahalva, which is why Ms. Leshar referred to the next budget item. We are requesting use of that contingency fund to true up their budget to give them the budget authority that they have used based on the increase in costs that we have seen.
Yeah, and so then ideally then next time we have this discussion, hopefully Facilities Management won't be on the list of the red budgets because I I just want to make sure that we're not we're not sort of having this public discussion about different departments without acknowledging the fact that their overages haven't they don't have any control over them.
Chair Gahalva, that was the intent. And I believe that we have. I have tried to state that we have been looking at the electricity. We did a 16-month analysis to see the trending on the electricity rate so that we could do some projection against actual invoices that have been paid by the county.
Okay, thanks. Any questions Supervisor Lee?
Thank you Chair Gahalva. Yes, I do have a question regarding the Public Defender Services. It doesn't look like in the description that that has anything to do with inflation. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Chair Gahalva Supervisor Lee, you are correct. The increase in costs related to contract attorneys is not what I would normally tag to inflationary pressures. But as all wages are rising, the cost to buy services is certainly impacted by that.
If I may, Chair Gahalva and Supervisor Lee, you were correct that what's causing the increase in Public Defense Services is they are required by law and by the courts to provide legal services. When they don't have attorneys on staff, if they have vacancies, we have to utilize the outside contract, the contracts with outside attorneys. The fewer people we have on staff right now, the more those costs are going up for the outside attorneys. That's what we've been watching very closely in their remediation plans. How can we staff them up as quickly as possible so that we can get those costs down for the outside court services?
Thank you Chair Gahalva. Administrator Leshar. With regards to that, though, wouldn't there be salary savings? And also the salary savings on those vacant positions along with their benefits account for a larger amount? It just doesn't make, you know, I mean, is the contract per hour so much more that it causes this to go up that much?
Chair Gahalva and Supervisor Lee, yes, the contracts are so much greater that that while they're over budget, that does that does include the decrease in the actual costs for employee benefits and those wages. That's included in there and they're just continued to rise.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for the presentation. And then if it's okay, we'll move to 15, which we referred to a lot, so we should vote. This is the recommended uses of inflation contingency. Staff is recommending approval of the use of inflation contingency in the amount of 550,000 dollars. Seven five 550,700 dollars to the Sheriff's Department and 537,867 dollars to Facilities Management to alleviate impacts of inflation. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion in a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? In favor, say aye.
Madam Chair. Wait, I would just wait and see if there was somebody else who wants to speak.
Yes. Oh, go ahead Supervisor Christie.
Thank you. I I do have a number of thoughts on this because we hear a lot about the reasoning for all these issues is inflation and and my my whole thought process and this is are we putting this over budget issue in a contingency bucket and not in the budgetary bucket of the department? And why haven't we? It appears we haven't been budgeting for inflation. And that that inflation has been occurring for over two years. Inflation is nothing new. Why wasn't inflation considered well before now?
Chair Gahalva, I'm sorry.
Administrator.
Supervisor Christie, we did. We have considered inflation. The board in the current budget allocated 5 million dollars for inflation. If you recall, when we went through the budget the last time, some departments had put in some inflation, some had not. We believed that the best way to handle this is we moved out of the different departments into one bucket, recognizing the inflation for these services with the knowledge that we would then come back to the board in instances such as this to then allocate of that 5 million dollars related to inflation specifically. It doesn't deal with additional contingency. Those are other issues completely. What we are focusing on today is the some utilization of the funds specifically set aside by this board for inflation to cover some additional inflation costs that are occurring in a couple of the departments at this point.
Well, as I was going to go on, like an additional question, is it really the Sheriff's Department and Facilities Management's fault if if we didn't properly budget for by not factoring inflation in? Are all these issues inflation related?
Chair Gahalva Supervisor Christie, we did budget correctly for inflation. The determination by the board at that time was again, rather than putting specific amounts of inflation each in each department, how much would facilities need? What would the Sheriff's Department need for vehicles or auto? We moved all of the the funding related to inflation to one line item of 5 million dollars. Then this board can allocate out to those departments to cover those inflationary costs. They were budgeted. They are simply budgeted in one line item to be dispersed to individual departments by this board as needed, rather than initially seeing how much, what would be the difference in in inflation in one department over another? That the best opportunity for this board to have transparency, to see what's happening with inflation in those areas is to come back to this board for the allocation and disbursement out of the fund that you've established.
So Madam Chair, Ms. Leshar, you we budget and we have all the costs associated with a department's budget. And then we still put 5 million dollars aside for inflation, but apparently that wasn't budgeted in the original budget part.
Chair Gahalva Supervisor Christie, we did budget for inflation. But rather than putting inflation in each departmental budget, we moved it into one line item so that this board could be very clear in seeing how inflation dollars are dispersed and utilized every time we draw down from them to fund inflation within the department.
Can I? So I I mean, the way I see it is that we knew that the increases were going to happen. We didn't necessarily know how much. And so we have this contingency fund, we'll pull from it, and then conceivably the next fiscal year we'll have a better estimate of energy costs, and then those budgets will reflect that.
Correct.
There. Okay. I know it makes sense now to me. All right, so we have a motion and a second for item 15. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Item passes four one with Supervisor Christie voting no. We have a time certain item at 11:30, and our next item on the agenda is RTA. I'm thinking we won't get through that in 15 minutes, so I'm wondering if we could just continue on with the agenda, skip over 11. And then we have item number 12. This is a county administrator salary adjustment. Administrator Leshar, this was an item put on by Supervisor Heinz. Administrator Leshar sent out a memo. I'm wondering if you wanted to speak to the item, and then I'll turn it over to Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you Chair Gahalva. I did send a memo respectfully requesting that both items seven and 12 be removed from the agenda and not considered at this time. I I do believe that we are still looking at the finances and we are not yet finished some of the the most the next phase, if you will, of the classification compensation. Right now, I've also sent a memo this morning to the board letting you know that I think the issue that's really before us right now deals with the break in service. Think people are getting some calls and comments about that. I'd be much more comfortable waiting until we're sure we see exactly what's happened in dealing with all of our employees through this phase of classification compensation. I I very much appreciate the thought and the consideration. As we've said before, I was at peace with the salary at that time. I have not requested an adjustment and respectfully request that those items be removed.
Okay Supervisor Heinz and Supervisor Lee.
So I think it probably makes sense to do the executive session before you take an action on item 12, right? I mean, I'm happy to speak about it now if we want to, but I.
Well, the only reason I touch on it is because Administrator Leshar is requesting a removal of it. And so, but it is your item. We can't make that decision.
No, I I don't. I'm not comfortable. Look, it's it's never a good time in any sort of institution to underpay the CEO. There's and we've been doing that for a number of years now, I think, so we have to have this discussion. And we can do multiple things at the same time, but it's time to to respect our CEO for the work that she is doing and stop paying her so so much less than the last person who was doing it. So so I don't. I would like to move forward with the executive session and then act on 12 if there is an agreement.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Lee. Did you want to speak on the issue?
I'd like to second that as a motion.
What what we'll do then is we'll just postpone, we'll move past this item and go to executive session Supervisor Christie.
Madam Chair, I will not be attending executive session on this issue. This issue with its history and with its controversy needs to be discussed in public, not behind closed doors. The highest paid administrator or employee of Pima County's position is is being discussed. The community needs to know exactly what is transpiring. And if anything else, it will bring this back out into the light of the public as opposed to the backroom issues that have always prevailed, any kind of of previous paid plans. So I will not be participating in in the executive session regarding Ms. Leshar's salary or anything to do with that. I know we have two executive sessions. So if there is an opportunity where I could be advised that the salary issue with Ms. Leshar's has has terminated as far as discussion, and I can come in, I'd appreciate it, but I will not be in it.
Okay, and I think what we'll do is we have the time certain item at 12. We'll use we'll do addendum item number three. That's advice, and then this item, item seven, we'll discuss after that. So you can participate in the front, the the first item, and then come out of executive session if that's the way you want to do that.
Thank you.
Okay Supervisor Heinz.
I just wanted to say with respect to my colleague's comments that I assumed the same thing that he did until I started looking into this item. And Jan Leshar is making the fifth highest amount in this county government at this time. So that just reinforces the point that we really actually this is highly irregular for any 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 institution like this. So this is this needs to be resolved, and I respect his decision not to participate.
Okay, so what we'll do then is we're going to skip over 12 until after executive session. That makes it okay. And so we've addressed 14, 15, 16. Now we're on 17, request for an electric easement. This is in District 2. I'll go ahead and move the item. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm motion in a second by Supervisor Lee. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. We've addressed 18. Now we're on 19. The Tucson Centers for Women and Children, a merge center. This is for to provide a no-cost extension. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
A motion in a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Item number 20 is Community and Workforce Development, Compass Affordable Housing. This is to provide housing, and there's a a contract amount. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion in a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. 21 is Natural Resources and Parks, JAL Ranching. This is a ranch agreement for Rancho Seco, Old Seco allotment. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion in a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Item passes unanimously. This is the Mount Lemon Fire District to provide, this is the Office of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, no-cost amendment contractual language. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
A motion and a second by Supervisor Christie. Any discussion? I would, I would like to ask, in these agreements, and it's not necessarily for this specific one, but do we have a standard of service? So generally, from what I understand, fire districts have an auto wait system which requires, you know, a fire truck to be able to get somewhere in eight minutes. I'm just wondering if, in these agreements that we have with rural metro and other fire districts, if there is a standard? And I think that would be a legal question, and so, Mr. Brown, if you can get back to us and just let me know. It's not specific to this item, but I think it's something that I wanted to know about, and I thought I could add that request on this item. Okay, motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Item passes unanimously. Can we take items 23, 24, 25, 26, 27? Yes? Okay, so I'll go ahead and request, so item 23 is an award for the IT department. 24 is an IT technology on behalf of the Sheriff's Department. 25 is revenue to provide, it looks like a private citizen, access to the county airport hangar. 26 is Sawato National Park to provide IGA for law enforcement dispatch, and 27 is RTA to provide Palaverdy Road Improvements Contract. So I'll move 23 through 27.
Second.
Have a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Item passes unanimous, items pass unanimously. And then we have item 28. This is grant application acceptance. Can we take 28 and 29?
Madam Chair, I have an objection to-
Okay, all right. You have an objection to one of them.
28.
Okay, so 28 is the acceptance of a capital program. This is Stratford Artworks to provide renovation for Theatro Carmen, and this is their fundraising efforts, and we're accepting that. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion?
Madam Chair, I-
Supervisor Christie.
I think it's a wonderful project and has a great deal of history and value. However, this is not located in Pima County. It's located in the city of Tucson, and consequently, I don't believe that the taxpayers of Pima County should be involved in this project, so I'll be voting no against it.
Well, it is in Pima County.
Well-
It is the city of Tucson and Pima County. You can, you can be residents of both. So, thank you. I'll go ahead, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item number 29 is the acceptance of natural resources and parks and recreation to provide invasive plant program. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion?
Chair Gudiehalva.
Yes, Supervisor Scott.
Could I ask, Ms. Lesher and Mr. DeBonis, could the board get a report, or an update, I should say, on how we are working with the federal, state governments, and all other entities to address invasive grasses in the area? I know we got an update, I think near the beginning of our tenure, but if there's any additional updates that we can get, I'd appreciate it. When we have meetings with homeowners associations in District 1, especially if they are close to the Catalina Mountains, we get a lot of questions about buffalo grass removal, and I know we're working with, with the state and federal government and sometimes HOAs, but would really like a comprehensive update for the board.
Thank you. Chair Gudiehalva, and I'll just say Supervisor Scott, we began right after the Lahaina fire as well to really do a deep dive and look at what was occurring with invasive species, what partners we had in the community with whom we could work, et cetera. Happy to provide an update to the board.
And this is acceptance of $193,500 with a match from general fund of $16,000 roughly, almost $5,000 in-kind volunteer contributions to support the match. So, and it's around Colossal Cave. Is that correct? Okay. So have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Item passes unanimously. We do have an item certain at 11:30. I'm wondering if we want to take a quick restroom break? Okay, so we'll be back close to 11:30. Thank you.
And the first item will be not the, the-
It will be South Tucson.
Item, addendum item number five. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. We're back in session. I know we have an item, item number five on the addendum that we're supposed to be doing eight minutes ago, but I'm wondering if you all will indulge us voting on procurement on the addendum number six, seven, eight, and nine. We have a couple of people that are waiting on those items. I'll go ahead and move those.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. So it's the addendum six, seven, eight, and nine.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Real quickly, I just have a question.
Supervisor Christie.
On seven.
Yes.
It says, "International Business Scenes to Provide for Enterprise Resource Planning, ERP, System Implementation Services." What's the status of ERP? Because I kind of remember it was supposed to be coming online in November.
And this is item number seven?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Administrator Leshar?
Certainly. Thank you. Chair Guti Hala, Supervisor Christie, if I may, Deputy County Administrator Holmes can give you that update.
Chair Guti Hala, Supervisor Christie, the financial part of the ERP is scheduled to actually go live sometime between April and May of this year. We have begun the HR component that was kicked off this last month with the hopes of that being completed by January 1st of 2025, with the financial part of it coming live here in the next few months.
So the November date, I had nothing, it must have been some other date I was thinking of.
We've had, Chair Guti Hala, Supervisor Christie, we've had some rolling dates of certain events that have happened over the course of the implementation. November was a big month for us in terms of some crossovers in terms of systems, but we are still scheduled, at least the financial portion of it, for April, May.
Okay. Thanks, Ms.
Any other questions? All right. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. And then could we do 10 and 11? It's just the Board of Adjustment appointee for District Three and for District Five. I'll go ahead and move both of those items.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. So now we're back to the item number five, Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Tucson to Support Provision of Fire and Emergency Medical Services. This is a discussion, direction, action directing the county to enter an IGA with the City of South Tucson to support provision of fire and emergency medical services to the businesses and residents of South Tucson through the county, through which the county will provide the City of South Tucson with $400,000 this fiscal year for this purpose from the county's fiscal year 24 contingency funds and declaring an emergency. This is an item that was brought forward by Supervisor Heinz. Did you want to speak to the issue? And then I'll turn it over to Administrator Leshar.
Sure. I would. And I think before I get into my remarks, I would like to invite--
Do you want to put the mic closer to you?
Sorry, sorry. The mask is not working. Yes, I would like to speak to that, but I would also, we have some representatives, elected officials as well, from the City of South Tucson here with us. And we also heard during call to the public from one of their elected officials who had to leave. So I think it's important that we hear from Vice Mayor Lopez a bit about to kind of frame this for us. And then I'll make my remarks and then Administrator Leshar.
Okay. Do you want to come forward?
Yeah, if you could come. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Hello?
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome, sir.
I want to thank Adita Guti Hala for expediting this. Jan Leshar, Dr. Heinz, it's very important for us to continue striving in our lives in the City of South Tucson. But either way, the City of South Tucson Mayor and Council is dedicated to prioritizing the engagement in economic development and opportunities to ensure the long-term enhancement and stabilization of the city's sales and property taxes in order for us to continue financially and adjust our budget as time needed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Administrator Leshar?
Let me real quick. Yeah, so this has been an issue that has been also concerned to me, nearly 5,000 residents in my district in the City of South Tucson. And as a medical doctor working in a hospital, not as much on the fire side, but for sure on the response, the EMS side, getting people having, you know, possibly traffic accidents, having chest pain or heart attacks. That's the kind of thing that we can't have any residents in this county that don't have, you know, reasonable access to these kinds of services. We can't have that. So, and I think it's pretty, it's frankly remarkable what the leadership of the City of South Tucson has done to this point in their efforts to stabilize their fire department and make sure that those response services are available to their residents. They have already been able to dedicate from their limited budget $1.6 million just due to their ongoing efforts to economize and to prioritize toward the $2 million annual fund act that they are hoping to engage with for the City of Tucson for the provision of these services and are requesting assistance with this right now, one-time $400,000 gap to make sure that they get those services. We, as a county, have, I mean, we heard some excellent arguments in terms of the opioid epidemic and the fentanyl prices. It is disproportionately affecting the City of South Tucson residents, and they absolutely must have these kinds of services available. And this, while we don't do it a heck of a lot, we do, we do send funds to other quasi-governmental entities. We give $300,000 every year to PAG. I'm not quite sure what we get out of that. And we give $30,000 to Mount Lemon's Fire District to help 39 permanent residents and another 250 or so seasonal residents up there. So if you are doing the math, what I'm suggesting is actually a little bit less per permanent resident that we give already to Mount Lemon Fire District. And the efforts of the City of South Tucson in terms of economic development, as evidenced by the meeting coming up on February 5th, and their ongoing efforts with our county administrator, our entire leadership team here, the IGA we have for economic development that they were working through, and their, you know, what they've already done, they've been able to do to pull together the vast majority of the funds to do this for their residents. I think it makes a lot of sense to do it. And frankly, I think the urgency is what is prompting me to bring this forward, even though it's not something we generally do. And happy to hear from the county administrator as well.
Administrator Leshar?
Thank you, Chair Guti Hala. And as has been pointed out, I think we have been doing everything we can to continue to support our friends in South Tucson in any variety of ways. We do have a meeting coming up to look at more global ways we can assist in the areas of economic development, as I have shared with Supervisors Heinz staff and with the City of Tucson. I do have some concerns with what's before us today, and part of that is, this is relating to an IGA with the City of Tucson. The documents that I have seen thus far from the City of Tucson is a letter from much earlier this year. I don't know the specifics of that IGA. And as I've suggested, honestly, my concern has been, while it's important that we support the City of South Tucson, the way that the documents are reading to me, we are making the City of Tucson whole for the provision of service rather than simply providing that service to the City of South Tucson. So if there's an interest in moving forward, perhaps we could, I'd be more than happy to follow up with county, with the city manager, Ortega, and see what might be possible there. I've had chatted with him before about what might be done to split costs, to assist in some way. You're right. I think what was commented on earlier, and I think it's critical to remember, the City of South Tucson receives a disproportionate share of the need for social services and transportation for people who are moving to and around other parts of the community through South Tucson that require assistance beyond what that community might be able to provide. My concern is, you know, how can we have provided through CDBG one-time money for equipment before? Is there equipment we can provide, other services we can provide that doesn't, again, to be brutally honest, make the City of Tucson whole out of the pocket of the taxpayers in Pima County?
Thank you. Any other? I have, I see Supervisor Lee and Supervisor Christie, and then Supervisor Heinz.
Chair Guti Hala, thank you. I would like to ask Mayor Diaz if, a question, and that is, have you gone before the Tucson City Council and requested assistance?
That's Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Lopez. Vice Mayor. Oh, Vice Mayor Lopez, sorry.
I'm back again. We have met with the mayor of the City of Tucson, Regina Romero, and with the city manager, and we have discussed the issues about our fire department, our situation. And at the same time, there's little hope for us to, there is some hope for us to continue moving with the assistance that the city is willing to provide us as well. Did I answer your question?
Yes and no. Have you gone before the, have you been, has anybody moved forward an agenda item to the city council as a whole? Have you, just as we have here?
Okay. I'll let my city manager contribute here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Board, Supervisor Adita Guti Hala, and of course, thank you, Dr. Supervisor Heinz. My name is Veronica Moreno. I'm the interim city manager for the City of South Tucson. And thank you for bringing this to the agenda. This is very much an urgent matter. I call it a crisis. It really is a crisis. And to reiterate what Councilman Aguirre said, it's not a handout, it's hand up. And to answer your question, Supervisor Lee, we have not formally gone to the City of Tucson just as yet, because this is, you know, a step-by-step process. In my communication with the city manager, the amount that you see before you is what has been quoted so far. So the City of South Tucson has estimated costs of the $1.6 million, which we have in our budget. So having received the quote from the City of Tucson, it's, you know, approximately $2 million. Since 2008, we do have an IGA with the City of Tucson, and that's for automatic aid. In those instances when we need assistance for like structure fires, because what we've been doing is, we've been manning our fire department, which ideally is required by NFPA's to have four per crew. So we've been manning it with three. So City of Tucson through this IGA has helped us, not to say that their role is to adhere to the fourth man, but they help us in those instances where we need assistance for structure fires. So that has been at no cost to the city. So the City of Tucson has not charged us anything in spite of their assistance in making sure that we have been whole as far as providing services to our community. This is a time where, you know, it's an expensive service, and, you know, someone needs to do it, and someone needs to get paid to do it. We would like to come back to the City of Tucson and see if there's, you know, based on what Mayor and Council gives us direction to do, to hopefully maybe negotiate that amount. But as far as having like a formal conversation at this level, it has not happened.
Supervisor Christie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things. One, one has to deal with the process that we're going through here. And also, I have to point out that using Mount Lemon as an equivalent situation is not applicable, because 90% of Mount Lemon's fire department's calls are from people that do not live at Mount Lemon. Mount Lemon is the playground of Pima County, and 90% of the calls they have to deal with is everybody else that goes up and visits. So it's not an equivalent situation there. And I'm also just questioning the process that why didn't this come from the county administrator? That seems kind of irregular to me. And then if you read the background, it says, "For fiscal year '25 and forward, the level of support from the county shall be negotiated with the City of South Tucson until such time as their sales and property tax revenues allow them to cover 100% of the costs of fire and EMS." That's kind of open-ended. We don't know how long this is going to be going on, and it certainly doesn't lend to any kind of helping up when we have no metrics or no indication of when South Tucson might be on its own as far as being able to support its fire and EMS. And then the process, again, why are we giving the money directly to South Tucson instead of giving it to the City of Tucson, who will be providing the services and letting them make the agreements with South Tucson?
Administrator Leshar, do you have, I don't know if there's--
I'm happy to--
--a response? Do you want to go ahead and--
Yeah.
--Supervisor Heinz?
I'm happy to, Chair and Supervisor. So this would be an agreement between the City of South Tucson and the City of Tucson that has not yet been inked and signed, because obviously the City of Tucson wants to make sure that the funds are available. So this does not exist yet. That is correct. In terms of writing this a bit open-ended, there could be an additional need for support. I suspect that a level of support will be going down because of the efforts that leadership in South Tucson have made with regard to taking care of balancing out kind of the property tax situation by, one of the actions recently they took was to request our help in code enforcement due to a couple of blighted, dangerous properties right by the freeway, very, very excellent locations, of course, to then develop. That's exactly why we're having the meeting with them on February 5th, to work together toward economic development, to see what we can do with that area. And once you get, you know, I mean, it's not going to be very long, I suspect, once we get some interested, interested businesses to be there to help increase that property tax base. Now, as we all know, property taxes aren't front-loaded, they're on the back end, right? So like, if a big box store went in there in six months, say, there wouldn't be a realization of, you know, that property tax income for 18, 24 months. In the meantime, we have to decide as supervisors in this county, do all of our residents deserve to have reliable 24/7 emergency response services? And I think that that answer is yes. And I would ask for your support.
Madam Chair?
Thank you. Supervisor Christie?
Quickly, on that same line, if you, going back to the background again, it says, allows them to, when tax revenues allow them, City of South Tucson, to cover 100% of the costs, do we have any forecast of when that 100% of costs will be covered?
Supervisor, Supervisor Heinz?
The, the amount of this IGA potentially between the City of Tucson and the City of South Tucson is approximately $2 million. They have $1.6 million budgeted for it for this cycle.
So this, we'll be back here again this, in a year to discuss subsidizing them again?
If that is necessary--
Supervisor Heinz?
Then yes.
Yeah.
So we have no, no forecast, no idea how long this will go? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Administrator Leshar, can you speak to any communication that you've had with the City of Tucson? Since this is really an IGA with the City of Tucson, and we don't have any information about that end.
Chair Guti Hala, and I think Ms. Moreno and others are on the same emails I was on. But when the item came out, and I know that Mr. Ortega was on those, he had communicated with me during that time, asking if I was aware of the status of an IGA, was there an IGA? Said there was not, and that I don't believe they were, they had one at this point. So I don't, I think that the most recent information I believe Ms. Ortega had was this letter from earlier, I'm looking at the June 13th date, saying, "The next steps might be to begin to look at what we might need to do to structure an IGA." And those are some of the communications I've had with him. He was not aware of any additional information at that time, I think. Is that fair?
Yes, if I may. Supervisor Chair Guti Hala and County Manager Leshar, you are correct. And just to kind of dip into more of our conversations that I've had with Mr. Ortega and his assistant city manager, Tim Thormer, they understand the city's position. I mean, it's the honest truth. We really don't have the difference. That's just being honest with you. We have worked really hard to make sure that we're able to come up with the estimated cost of $1.6 million. If we had the wherewithal, we would absolutely, you know, fund the $2 million. This is all about health and safety, really, at the end of the day. And it's about people, and how do you put a price tag on people? So, once we get back after today's meeting, we definitely will be going back to City of Tucson, and we are hoping that our council can negotiate the amounts that they quoted us. So they understand that the city is facing our financial challenges, and they realize that we may need some help, not only from Pima County, but from City of Tucson as well.
Okay. I think one of my concerns is that we're making an assumption on what the city's going to be able to do. And we don't really know if this investment is going to get you where you need to get. Like, so if they don't, if they don't reduce an amount--
Right.
--and we're asking, the request is $400,000, and the amount isn't reduced, it still doesn't get you where you need to be for, to make sure that we provide like a safety net for the citizens of South Tucson. So that's, that's my worry. And then the other is that there, there doesn't seem to be kind of an estimated time. It's sort of like, this is the investment this year, the next year, we're not sure, and the following. There doesn't seem to be sort of, as far as an emergency, like this is the one-time emergency funding. That's not what's being proposed in my estimation. It's sort of like, we're going to continue to make sure that South Tucson is, is whole. And the one comment that registered with me with, when Administrator Leshar was talking, is that this makes sure that the City of Tucson is whole.
Right.
But I feel like if it's going to be a shared responsibility that we both sort of share in that, which means they're gonna, if they reduce their amount, then this funding might be able to be helpful. So I sort of feel like, I'm wondering if we could have more concrete information from the City of Tucson before we extend $400,000 when we're not sure if $400,000 is actually going to be what you need.
Okay.
Does that, I mean, I don't know if that makes sense. I mean, I want to be supportive, because the City of South Tucson is like, you know, District Five is on either side of you. So we're, all of your, we go through your community all the time. And I, what resonated with me was the comment about the impact that City of South Tucson, and the disproportionate impact that the City of South Tucson has as we're dealing with fentanyl and homeless. I mean, it's, there's a concentration of poverty-- fentanyl and homeless. I mean, there's a concentration of poverty that our services, Pima County should be assisting. I mean, and not just the efforts that we do with the Health Department and through economic development and through community workforce development. I think it's important for us to look at all of that. Because I know the City of Tucson usually includes South Tucson in their kind of projects. Like, South Tucson is always included and we're normally not included in that. So perhaps this is an opportunity for us to be more aware of what the need is and partner a little better. But my worry is that we're talking, there's three organizations, the government's involved, and we're only talking with two. And my concern would be what, like, nothing's on paper. Like, you've had conversations, Administrator Lesher's had conversations, but we don't have anything from the City of Tucson that says, yes, this is going to be our support. Does that make sense? Supervisor Christie?
Would you then be wanting to move for a continuance where we could get a report, an analysis by the county administrator, as well as a simultaneous representation in writing from the City of Tucson?
Well, this is Supervisor Heinz's item, so I wanted to give him the opportunity, but otherwise, yes.
Look, I agree that, and we actually talked about this in some of our conversations, could the City of Tucson perhaps, you know, reduce that a little bit? Or if there's this delta of $400,000 while we're waiting for the economic development efforts that we're literally actively engaging in with our own economic development department folks, while we wait for these to bear fruit, is there a way that we could kind of share that burden a bit more with the City of Tucson? I think that is certainly fine for ongoing. My motion is for $400,000 right now. That's all I'm asking for. And I think all this stuff can be worked out. But in a $1.7 billion budget, given all of the, you know, given all this discussion so far, I really, I think we need to do this. And I'm going to ask for a vote.
Okay. So that's a motion?
Oh, I guess if no one wants to second me, then I won't be asking for a vote.
Well, my concern, so you asked for a motion, and it died for lack of a second. My concern is that I'm not sure if the $400,000 is going to be what the community needs to get, to get all of the services that are provided if the City of Tucson isn't willing to work with us, either in kind or reducing costs. So I hear what you're saying, but you have, what was the total? 1.?
$2 million.
$2 million? Total amount?
$2 million, right. And you had 1.2?
1.6.
You have 1.6. So you're asking for the 4. I would, I just think that it would be, let's say the City of Tucson says, okay, we're going to reduce our amount by 200,000. Well, then our contribution is 200,000. I think that that's sort of, we're both taking a little bit of the, you know, we're both investing, like, to ensure that the community is safe. And I hear what you're saying. I think it's really important. My hope is that you still have the IGA with the city right now. So if there is an urgent need, people are going to, you're going to get the assistance.
Yes.
Yes. So you'll have, like, that I'm assuming from the downtown fire district, is that the closest one to you?
I believe, I mean, logistically, I believe they have three stations right around South Tucson, the downtown, the one on Mission, and then I think there's one off of Ajo.
Yeah, okay. Because I was doing, I was looking at the map, too. Because I think it's more the ambulatory services, like the paramedic services. Those are the ones that we want to make sure that someone can get to anybody in South Tucson in eight minutes. That's the standard, right? Eight minutes, or hopefully less, but eight minutes.
And I will, if I may, Chair Supervisor Gudalova, this really is urgent. And this is why I'm thankful for Supervisor Heinz bringing this to the agenda. We are really struggling with the current model. We have been relying on reserve firefighters who come from other agencies. They're full-time and we hire them because our unfunded liability is what's really killing us with the PSPRS. So to hire one-
What is PSPRS?
PSPRS, Public Safety Personnel Retirement System.
Thank you. I'm just making, like, we use acronyms and I don't know that one.
So to hire one firefighter in the City of South Tucson, for every $1, it costs us about $3 to the PSPRS, Public Safety Retirement, which is what's holding us from hiring full-time firefighters. So that's a big challenge for us. So we've been relying on reserve firefighters and it's a very unique model, but it's not a reliable model. So we're finding instances where we just don't have any coverage. During the week, we're okay, but on weekends and holidays is where we really struggle with staffing, so.
Understood. Would, could we postpone this item until, like, February 16th to give an opportunity for things to, at least we can get something in writing. I think two weeks might be a little bit short, but if we get it sooner, then we can add it. But otherwise, it would be very specific to postpone till the 16th of February. Is that acceptable? Or the 20th, I'm sorry. The 16th, we don't have a meeting. But I keep saying 16th, but it's the 20th. And if we have something earlier, we have movement earlier, then we can bring it earlier. All right? So I'll go ahead and move that we postpone this item to the February 20th meeting?
Second.
And have a second by Supervisor Scott. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Item passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, yes, we do. So we have a time certain at 12 o'clock for executive session. So can I get a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
And I'll second. Let me just clarify the two items that we're going to be going in for. One is on, I apologize. We have an executive session, item three on the addendum, discussion, consultation, legal advice regarding communication with the federal government. And that would be the first one that we address. And then the second one is, okay, and then the second one is item number seven on the agenda, and that is for legal advice discussion regarding adjusting the salary of county administrator. So because Supervisor Christie indicated he didn't want to participate in item seven, I would recommend we move to addendum item three first, and then Supervisor Christie can come out, and then we'll work on seven, and then we'll come back. All right? So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Item passes unanimously. We'll be back. Go into exec. Thank you. 4-0. Oh, yes, Supervisor Heinz is in here. Thank you.
Hello? Okay, there we go. Thank you so much for your patience. We're going to go and address item number three, executive session was legal advice. Item number, oh, I'm sorry, addendum item number three, executive sessions, legal advice. Agenda item number three, also legal advice, but there is a vote. Item attached, item number 12, and this was discussion, I'm sorry. No, I said seven was a, yeah, oh yeah, seven was legal advice. And now we're going to go to 12, which is the vote item, and what I'm going to move is that we, we take the recommendation from our county administrator and delay consideration of this item until all of the class and compensation issues for our county employees have been resolved. So I'll do that in the form of a motion. Second, so have a motion in a second, and then I will communicate with our county administrator, and they'll, she'll let me know when that's all done. Is that a, do you have a question, Supervisor Christie?
So at this particular point, it's being delayed until we get the information.
Correct.
Any, any decision on that?
Well, her recommend, the memo that she wrote out basically said, until the, all of our employees issues are taken care of, I don't want consideration of mine. And so we're going to go ahead and, and honor that request. Okay, so have a motion and a second by Supervisor Lee. Any other discussion? On favor, say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. And so I believe we are on item 11. Correct? Yes. That's draft Regional Transportation Authority, RTA Next Plan. This is discussion following the January 17 meeting of the RTA Technical Management Committee, and prior to the RTA Board meeting, January 25th, discussion, possible action by the Board of Supervisors to evaluate the draft RTA Next Plan as recommended by TMC. This is an item that was brought forward by Supervisor Heinz. So if you wanted to introduce it, and then I'll turn it over to Supervisor Scott as our representative on the RTA.
I actually need to introduce it and make motions. Why are we turning you over to Supervisor Scott?
Well, because I'm assuming he wanted to discuss, but go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you can.
I can go through my, okay.
No, 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 please.
Let me see my thing, okay.
No.
All right. So, you know, this is something that I've been kind of monitoring for a while. It's been three years, and I just don't feel like our board has had the kind of input that, that, for example, the city council of Tucson has had with Mayor Romero, and I think that it's important, given, you know, the importance of the meeting and the new compromise kind of deal, that, that County Administrator Lusher and Deputy County Administrator DeBonus have been helping to craft, bringing together all of the nine parties here, which I think, by the way, your work is to be commended. It's been really very, very well done to this point. I think that, you know, that the, this compromise draft proposal does take into account a lot of the recommendations from the Citizens Advisory Committee, and also the concerns expressed by the City of Tucson, individual council members, as well as the mayor. I do think, though, that there can, there can be some improvement, and that's what I wanted to bring forward this item, just to talk about a few things that I would like us to, to potentially consider, amend, and then maybe endorse from our perspective as a board in terms of our stated positions for consideration by the RTA Board. Obviously, any decision, anything that we do here does not mean that's a final, you know, it's not the final say, we're one of nine, but I think it's incredibly important, given that we're about to potentially put for another two decades this issue before the voters to be, to have it approved, especially in light of some of the things that did or didn't happen with RTA number one. So, the first thing that I would like for us to consider is that the current draft does not have any funding for pavement preservation and heavy maintenance of roadways built with RTA, previous RTA funds. And I think we really do know better than that. People, frankly, at the hospital, at my other workplace, at, actually, all over the place, you know, confront me with all sorts of roadway issues and, you know, needs for repair, whether it's heavy or not. And that's, and that's something that I think probably all of my colleagues have experienced. So the idea, and that was something that the City of Tucson was very concerned about, having no maintenance built in, no pavement preservation built into, to the RTA Next program really doesn't make any sense to me. And so, based on that, my staff and I looked at the existing compromise and found that one of our priorities as a county, it's our fourth priority, this colossal cave road expansion, which costs $160 billion, $157 million of that comes from RTA dollars. That's 6.7% of the entire RTA Next funding that will be available, based on the pessimistic estimates. And I just, it seems to overbuild the capacity in that area, and it's an area where there's definitely some division amongst the people in the Vale community as to whether or not they even want this expansion. Now, it's not 200 million, like the City of Tucson had requested or recommended that, that be included for pavement preservation and heavy maintenance, but I believe that as the county, we have a different, we must have a different perspective. It's not just sitting there with an abacus, counting the county dollars and our projects in there. It's different. We have to have a completely different way to analyze this, and that is to do what's best for the region. And in my opinion, and I hope some of my colleagues here, it's far better use of dollars, instead of over-expanding, I believe, this, this project for Colossal Cave Road, would be to, would be to set aside those funds, give up that particular project from Pima County voluntarily, and set aside those funds to be devoted to a new RTA Next category for pavement preservation and heavy maintenance of RT, previously RT-built projects across the region, not just in unincorporated Pima County, but some of those funds, you know, as long as it's with a previously done, previously completed RTA project. Once those projects start to come due for heavier maintenance, require additional preservation funding, that there can be this fund in place as a part of RTA Next going forward. That will be one of my motions. And then the other two, I think, are pretty reasonable. The first one is, or number two is, and this is what the CAC actually recommended as well, because we saw significant shortfalls with RTA, the first RTA, there was a lot of, a lot of stuff got swept, like safety things, transit things, all sorts of things that got swept that were priorities of the community that the voters voted on. They were not asked about these sweeps, they just sort of did them. You know, again, this is a lot at the, at the behest of the executive director with, in whom I have zero competence, but that's a side issue. So I believe we should put it into the ballot language that shortfalls will be, like, any, any deficiency in, in funding will not be, you know, will be, will be, will be proportionally distributed across all the various categories, and I think that's important. And then kind of a bit of a corollary on number three. If there's a surplus, which, given the pessimistic estimates that they're using, I'm hopeful that there could be a surplus, that any revenues that exceed the projections for the RTA Next program would be equally allocated to some of those categories that were swept, such for transit, environmental mitigation, and safety and active transportation, and if it is included by the RTA Board, ultimately, that new category of preservation, of pavement preservation and heavy maintenance. The, I mean, just as one example, the voters approved 510, this is in 2006, $510 million for transit, and I believe we've spent not quite 350 million due to all the funding sweeps that were done to, to protect named road projects. So, and not all of them, because a couple from the City of Tucson, of course, were not able to be completed due to that. So that is why I wanted to bring this item forward, and those will be three individual motions, if, or, but I don't have to make them yet. We can, I can, happy to hear from other colleagues as well.
Thank you Supervisor Heinz. Discussion. Supervisor Scott.
So, I think every elected body that is a member of the RTA approaches matters differently. And if there has been any failure on my part to touch base with my colleagues regularly, I apologize for that, but I don't think that's been the case. Because anytime somebody from any of the other offices has contacted me with regard to positions that I'm going to take as our representative on the RTA Board, always very responsive. Granted, we don't have a standing agenda item like the mayor and council do, as Supervisor Heinz pointed out. I don't know if the town councils do things any differently, but this is something that I want to point out, and Supervisor Heinz is aware of this, because he has a staff member come to every PAG RTA meeting. Anytime I go before the RTA Board, it is with a proposal that does not come out of the District One office. It is with a proposal that comes out of It is with a proposal that comes out of meetings that I have had with Ms. Lesher, Mr. DeBonus, Ms. Skinner from the Transportation Department, and Ms. Hiller from my office. Because I have always felt that anytime that I am sitting at the RTA Board, I am there as the representative of the county, not the representative of District One. So I wanted to say that right up front, and I think Supervisor Heinz is aware of that. So when there's a reference made to the compromise plan that was approved by the TMC on January 17th, that is not a compromise plan that was cobbled together by Ms. Lesher and Mr. Debonus. That was a compromise plan that was put together by the five of us, working on behalf of the county. The other thing that we always take into account, the other thing that we always take into account is that everybody seated at the RTA Board is a resident of Pima County. And so it's absolutely vital that, as the county representative, that I am ensuring that all voices are heard and that the concerns of all jurisdictions are heard and honored. We have taken the course with every proposal that we have put forth to the RTA Board, and by the way, every proposal that we've put forth to the RTA Board has passed unanimously, 9-0. Every time that we have brought a proposal forth, including the proposal that led to the consensus proposal that was just approved by the TMC. If you go to the item that I attached to your item, Supervisor Heinz, you will see a motion that we crafted, the five of us, that I brought to the RTA Board on December 7th. They passed it, I said 9-0, 8-0, because Chairman Jose was not present. And that led to what happened at the TMC on January 17th. On January 4th, which was the first TMC meeting, the City of Tucson came to that meeting with a new proposal. By the way, that new proposal is reflected in the document that's attached here. It included no funds for maintenance or pavement preservation, none. We, there was, as Mr. Debonus reported to us, Ms. Lesher was not able to go to that meeting because she was in Lukeville with Supervisor Gohalva and Supervisor Lee. There was no ability to find consensus at that meeting. So we met again as a county team to talk about what the city brought forth, what we knew to be the concerns of the other jurisdictions, and we put together a compromise proposal that both Mr. Debonus and Ms. Lesher brought to the TMC the next time they met. Every jurisdictional representative, including the three from the City of Tucson, voted for that proposal that the county put together. Now, there were some amendments that were made during the meeting, of course, but basically it was, the foundation was the county proposal. And for me, and I think, I think I can speak on behalf of Ms. Lesher and Mr. Debonus as well, your three motions that you intend to make today are going to muddy the waters. Again, whatever mayor and council may have said, they have not directed their staff to put money for pavement preservation, maintenance into a proposal. It's never been done. You can see that right there. It was difficult. I think the TMC meeting on January 17th took right around four hours. It was difficult for them to get to consensus, but they did it. What I don't want to do on Thursday is go into that meeting and say, look, despite everything that our professionals on the TMC were able to cobble together, the county's decided to come in with these three proposals. I don't think that's the right thing to do. There's a need for us to think regionally, act regionally, not act parochially, and that has been our position as the county. We actually gave up some funds for the Raze Grant for Valencia Road. We took out the county portion of the Shannon Road project. We've given and given and given to demonstrate to our colleagues that we want to get to a point where we can reach consensus, because there is not going to be any federal or state money coming into this region for anything other than maintenance. And if we don't have an RTA Next Plan to put in front of the voters that has passed to cover the next 20-year period, we are going to be in a world of hurt. The other thing I will say, and we got these very late, I saw them in my email after the board meeting had already started, so I apologize if my colleagues haven't seen these, but one of your proposals, Supervisor Heinz, is to remove the Colossal Cave Project, and we have received letters of objection to that proposal from the Superintendent of the Vail Unified School District and from the Chief of the Rincon Valley Fire District, each one of them citing reasons specific to their organizations against that. I would ask my colleagues that we allow me to go into the RTA Board meeting and talk with my colleagues from the other jurisdictions about what our jurisdictional professionals came together and agreed upon on the 17th and not muddy the waters with these motions. Thank you for giving me the opportunity, Chair Gohalva.
Thank you, Supervisor Lee and Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Chair Gohalva. I would like to ask Ms. Lesher, what kind of monies? I heard Supervisor Scott say there's dollars come in for maintenance. Did I hear that correctly?
What I, thank you Supervisor Lee. What I said was that nobody, no jurisdiction, has proposed funds for maintenance in the proposals that you see attached. The city plan that came to the TMC on January 4th did not include funds for maintenance. The proposal that we put forth on January 17th, even after there were some amendments made by the TMC on January 17th, does not include funds for maintenance. And something I wanted to add is that what we heard from Ms. Skinner when we were putting together our proposal is that what is being discussed would maybe result in a mill and fill, one mill and fill project over the course of 20 years. That's not maintenance. That's not maintenance.
So am I to understand if RTA went away today, you know, in two years? And we have put all of the roads from RTA 1 that are, some are probably close to 20 years and some are much, much less. If the county in unincorporated areas said, because as I understand it, there's maintenance where you put asphalt into a pothole, and then there's maintenance that, I don't know the name of it, but you grind everything, take it away, and you put new stuff on, and it lasts...
Mill and fill.
That's mill and fill. So it takes, it lasts 15 years, 20 years, whatever. Does the county have money if RTA goes away for mill and fill, for the roads that were developed under RTA 1?
Ambassador Lesher.
Thank you. Sorry, Chair Gohalva and Supervisor Lee, I'm going to turn to Deputy County Administrator Debonus, no specifics of those budgets, to provide assistance. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Lee, so the county and this Board of Supervisors approved a 10-year road repair plan, and that was designed to repair all of the county roads over that 10-year period. So we're five years into that plan, and the idea was that once those roads were repaired, so not the routine maintenance that you mentioned, pothole filling, but they were repaired. We took up asphalt, we put down new asphalt, that then those would be maintained on a regular basis going forward. So the plan that was approved by this board and that has been underway over the first five years of that 10-year program includes not only repairing, but then maintaining roads on a going-forward basis, including those segments that were constructed with RTA 1.
Chair Gohalva, Mr. Debonus, how much is that? I mean, it's a 10-year approved plan. How much do we allocate per year?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Lee, so the dollar amounts annually vary. So they started out with an amount that was a combination of highway user revenue funds, basically gasoline tax that the county receives from the state, and then there was a portion of it that was contributed from the general fund through the Pay As You Go program. So those dollar amounts started out with a gradual increase, but then this board approved in multiple consecutive fiscal years, advancing of those pay-go funds to do more roads sooner in the plan than otherwise would have occurred. So we have delivered over $100 million in repairs in some fiscal years. This current fiscal years program is more in the $20 million range, but that will ramp up as we go through the remaining years of the plan.
Thank you very much. I do have one follow-up question, if I may, Chair Gohalva. If, well, let me word it this way. I'd like to ask you a question. Should maintenance be the responsibility, meaning the heavy maintenance, capital maintenance, whatever you want to call it, that mill and whatever, mill and fill, be the, I want your opinion, the responsibility of each municipality and Pima County unincorporated in the city? Should that be the responsibility built within those different municipalities?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Lee, I appreciate the question, and in practice, that has been the responsibility of each of the jurisdictions to maintain its own roads. And so it's only recently that this conversation has come forward as part of RTA Next on whether to allocate a portion of those funds if the plan was approved by voters towards maintenance. But we have been responsible for maintaining our roads, and admittedly, over decades, we in Pima County, as well as other jurisdictions, have really struggled with having enough resources to do that. It's really an exercise in prioritization, and as demonstrated by the Board of Supervisors, the county has established a 10-year plan to get us back on track, repair those roads, and then keep them maintained on a going-forward basis. So in my opinion, that is the responsibility of each jurisdiction to prioritize the funding to maintain the roads.
If I have a follow-up. So if that's the case, I heard you say the county has struggled to find those funds, correct?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Lee, over history, the county has not allocated sufficient funds to maintain the roads. And when you look at the road network, there are a lot of different aspects of it, and the pavement condition usually gets most of the conversation or the attention, but there are signals, there are signs, there's striping, there are shoulders, there's guardrails, there's sidewalks, there's curb ramps, all of those different features. We have dirt roads in our maintenance system, and again, it has not always been the highest priority for us to invest in pavement maintenance, but that has changed in the recent past as a result of actions by this Board of Supervisors.
So if that's the case, and I know RTA 1, as I'm understanding it, never, as I understand it, I thought I heard that in RTA 1, at the very beginning, it was decided that maintenance was out of the picture, correct?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Lee, that's correct.
So if there was maintenance in RTA Next for heavy maintenance, whatever that definition is, would it not be helpful to all the jurisdictions? Because are they not also struggling because all these new roads have been developed over 20 years, and now they're going to need heavy maintenance?
So, Madam Chair and Supervisor Lee, I think the answer to that question may vary by jurisdiction. So there are jurisdictions who have indicated that they're capable of maintaining their roads, and they don't need supplemental funds through an RTA Next. So the county has been fortunate enough to define a plan to do road repair and then regular maintenance on a going-forward basis through that 10-year program. The RTA is a limited or a finite amount of funds, if it's a half-cent sales tax that's brought to the voters and the voters approve it. So included currently are projects that are roadway corridor projects, they're safety projects, they are active transportation projects that are bicycle lanes and pedestrian-type improvements, there are environmental project improvements that are included in there, and then there's a transit component within the RTA Next. If maintenance were to be inserted at any dollar amount, then other projects would have to come out of that plan, and the jurisdictions would be then facing the challenge of how to fund for those projects. So from that perspective, if maintenance were to be included, then there would be another unmet need that the jurisdictions would have to figure out funding. It's not an absolute, you know, we can get everything that potentially is desired by jurisdictions through this plan.
Thank you. Supervisor Christie, then Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to touch on a couple of things regarding the Colossal Cave Project. First of all, Supervisor Scott mentioned the Vail Unified School District, the Rincon Valley Fire District, also the Vail Chamber. The community is not divided on that issue. As a matter of fact, the Vail community and that area of my district is the fastest-growing and most heavily populated area of growth in Pima County. So they are very much in favor of this and have been since the original RTA 1 was put into effect. And the statement here in Supervisor Heinz's background that this county project of Colossal Cave was not among our highest priorities throughout the process is wrong. It was a priority. It was highly prioritized. So at this particular point, that negates this issue that it's not worthwhile. And I wanted to ask our representative to the PAG RTA Board, Supervisor Scott, this, the item in Supervisor Heinz's proposal, regulatorily-wise, statute-wise, legal-wise, the foundation of the RTA, this derives its strength and legitimacy through the state legislature. So for this board to make a vote to eliminate a project is illegal, and it can't happen. We don't have that authority to, as a Board of Supervisors, to make a motion to remove a project that was passed by the voters in 2006. Is that a fair statement?
Supervisor Scott.
Supervisor Christie, I think the Colossal Cave Project in question, I don't think it was part of RTA 1. I think it's a project that we are considering for RTA Next. There are four projects that were in RTA 1 that are moving forward to RTA Next. Two of them are city projects, one of, no, I'm sorry, yeah, two of them are county projects. One is a city project, and then one is a joint county and city project, but it's not Colossal Cave. What am I, I feel like I'm not getting those four projects right.
So, Madam Chair, Supervisor Scott, the deferred projects, there is a county project, there are two city projects, and then there is a county and Morana project...
Thank you.
...that are being deferred from RTA 1.
But the Colossal Cave Project that is the part of Supervisor Heinz's motion is... is included in RTA Next. RTA Next has not been fleshed out, so the RTA Board still has the capability to, to add or take out projects.
But that's where, Madam Chair, that's where the authority lies.
Correct.
Not in the Board of Supervisors.
That's, that's correct, but I think what Supervisor Heinz is hoping to accomplish is that I will come forth with that, that proposal to the RTA Board. But you're right, that ultimately, it's the whole board's decision.
The whole board's decision, and, and that no other entity really has the authority in and of itself to remove, or add, or detract, or amend any kind of projects, because it's obviously not in their purview.
Correct. But I think what he is proposing is that that be our position. And what I'm requesting is that we not approve either of those three motions, and that we continue as an entire RTA Board negotiating with each other, which is what we've been doing.
So your position on Supervisor Heinz's proposal, again?
Yeah, I would ask, if he makes a motion for any of them, I would ask that we oppose them.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Supervisor Scott.
Thank you Supervisor Heinz.
So this conversation actually is kind of, this is exactly the time that the nine, or I guess kind of eight, effectively, members of the RTA Board that participate. This is exactly when that board needs the input from all eight or nine, right? And so I'm not trying to muddy anything, I'm trying to make a sensible recommendation that I believe makes the most sense for the whole county. So I think this is a clarifying motion, or these three will be. And in terms of the, the maintenance category, I heard Mr. DeBonis talk about how other jurisdictions would need to find more, no, no, no. This, I'm, I'm advising that we sacrifice that fourth highest priority project in Pima County, Colossal Cave Road, because, you know, at least J.J. Lamb and others that, you know, there are definitely people that do not support this road widening. I wouldn't say it's unanimous at all in the Vail area, but we're, that's where the funding is coming from. I'm not saying that we just add the category and force the RTA to find the money from somewhere else. I'm saying that in the interest of the greater good of regionality, that we reduce our named projects by one, take that $157 million, and then, in fact, I propose that Colossal Cave Road project be removed from the plan, and that the $157.3 million instead be devoted to a new category within RTN X for the, for pavement preservation and heavy maintenance of RTA-built projects across the region, and that is in the form of a motion. So just to be clear.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second by Supervisor Lee. Additional discussion? Supervisor Lee?
Yes. I'd like to ask the question of Supervisor, Chair Gahalva, Supervisor Scott. I have a question. Has RTA Board ever discussed increasing the amount that we go to the voters in 2026?
Supervisor Lee, just to make sure I know what you're asking, are you asking if the RTA Board is ever considered going beyond the existing half-cent sales tax?
Yes. Well, I'm assuming it would have to go through the legislature and through us, or we could go direct.
Supervisor Lee, one of the motions that the county put together, and that was passed unanimously by the RTA Board, gave direction to the CAC that they not forward us any plan that proposed an amount higher than the existing half-cent. And we have not, as an RTA Board, taken up that discussion. I will, it has never come forth from any of our members. I will point out that in RTA Board meeting this summer, that Mayor Romero stated explicitly that she thought we should stay at the existing half-cent. And that is a position that I know to be held by the mayors of Morana, Oro Valley, and Sararita.
Okay. If I, Chair Gahalva.
Supervisor Lee.
Yeah. With regards to the RTA Next plan, why is the meeting in two days, Supervisor Scott, so critical? I understand we're going for a vote in perhaps May of 2025, but is there not time for discussion about, why, why, why in two days? Is this like a drop-dead date, or?
No.
Because it seems that it's, there's a lot of issues. One of the things that I worry about is, we see it all the time, and we get complaints. You know, I'm driving today down Stone, and there was all kinds of water over by Geronimo, and boom, a big piece of the road had gone. You know, and so my car goes poop. So I'm sure, you know, with all of the, in 20 years from now, or in 10 years from now, do, what I worry about is having enough for the county and all the jurisdictions within the county umbrella, to have enough to really make sure that the roads we're on are, are good roads, and not, you know, ones that you put more asphalt and then they fall apart when the rain comes.
So Chair Gahalva, Supervisor Lee, the RTA Board passed that motion on December 7th, asking the TMC to take the two draft plans that the CAC brought forth. They could not agree on one plan. They brought two forth. One of them is called 4.2, the other one is called 5.1. And the TMC was asked to try, to use those two plans as the basis to come up with a consensus plan to give to the RTA Board at our meeting on January 25th, two days from now. Now, that's what the TMC was asked to do, that's what they've done. The RTA Board may decide, hey, that plan is the one that we want to send out for the public review period. Because what's going to happen through most of 2024 is the kind of robust public review period that this community saw in 2006. But the RTA Board may also, on January 25th, say, thank you, TMC, we appreciate you following up on the motion that we made in December, but we want to make some additional changes, or we want to have some additional discussion. So it is entirely possible, on Thursday, that this plan will not be the one that goes out for the public review period. The RTA Board may decide, we want to come back and have further discussion about it. We may send something back to the TMC. I know that delights both Ms. Lesher and Mr. DeBonis to think of that prospect. But this, this meeting is crucial in that the jurisdictional professionals, all of them, who represent all of the jurisdictions, agreed on something to send to us, so that we could use that as the basis for discussion. But that's, that's what's critical about the meeting, but it doesn't necessarily mean that that's the plan that's going to go out for public review. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? So we have a motion and a second, and can we clarify what the vote, because there were three proposals, and it sounded like you read off one specific one.
I did. I can read the other two at the same time. I figured we would take them one at a time.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to be clear on what we're voting on in this.
Sure. I'll repeat myself. So I propose that the Colossal Cave Road project be removed from the plan, and that the $157.3 million instead be devoted to a new category within RTA Next for the pavement preservation, for pavement preservation and heavy maintenance of RTA-built projects across the region.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
To clarify, the yes vote would be to send the county's representative to advocate for this position.
Yes, it's a statement of our priority as a board that would be conveyed by a representative, not, it doesn't make this happen, obviously.
Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, I'll do a roll call vote, please. Oh, Supervisor Lee. That was a while ago. Yeah.
I mean, I feel like, no, no, it's fine. I mean, yes, we've all, he's like, she's through a second. I'm like, yeah, Supervisor.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Lee?
No.
Supervisor Scott?
No.
Chair Gahalva? No. Item fails for one, with Supervisor Heinz voting yes for some, some iteration of that. You had other proposals? Did you want to discuss those?
No, no, no.
Actually, yeah, I will, we'll do all. You guys can vote no multiple times. I propose that per the recommendation of the CAC, any shortfalls in projected revenues over the 20-year lifetime of the RTN X plan be applied equally across all categories of the plan in terms of necessary cuts or scaling back the projects and initiatives needed, and further that the voters be made aware of this contingency plan clearly in ballot language. And you don't have the second.
And I, I can second.
Because I'd rather just read these.
I'll second, because I think, I think that it's important that, that if there's any shortfalls, that it try to be absorbed as equitably as possible throughout the different programs. And I do think that one of the criticisms that has been made is that the, some of the projects that have been cut have disproportionately affected different areas. So I'm not, I mean, and again, we're just sending it as a consideration. It doesn't mean that it will move forward with any other piece of it. So I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
Chair Gahalva.
Supervisor Scott.
Again, I ask that we oppose this motion and any subsequent one as we did the last one, because I think these negotiations should happen at the RTA Board level.
Absolutely. I think the only, I think it's been, for me personally, being brought forward for you to consider to take it forward, not so much, you know, I mean, that's really all we can do, because you're our representative, and we understand that there are negotiations that are going on. But for there to be some consideration that if there is an increase or decrease in funding, that there be some sort of equitable distribution across the different projects. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Ask for a roll call vote, please. Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Lee?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
No.
Chair Gahalva?
Yes. Item passes 3-2 with Supervisor Scott and Christie voting no. Supervisor Heinz?
Okay, last one. In line with the spirit of the CAC's recommendations, I propose that if revenues exceed projections for the RTA Next, yeah, that the surplus funds be applied equally across the following categories: transit, environmental, and safety and active transportation.
Okay, so that's a motion. It died for lack of a second. Okay, thank you. All right. So now we are on addendum item, now I've lost my place. Hold on. Oh, addendum item number four. This is addendum one, item number four. It's the Palo Solari Chapel, and this is a resolution, request for a resolution in support of preservation of the chapel. And this was brought forward by Supervisor Heinz.
Yeah, in light of the action of the university, I will withdraw this as an item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now we are on addendum item, addendum two, item one. Too many. And this is County Fair Horse Racing Meet 2024. This is to, this is an action or request for discussion, direction, action regarding the Pima County Fair Horsing Racing Commission's request for four county fair horse racing days at Turf Paradise Racetrack, March 7th, March 14th, March 21st, and March 28th, 2024. Do you have a recommendation?
I'll move the item.
Supervisor Scott, move the item, and Supervisor Christie seconds. Any discussion?
Chair Gahalva.
Supervisor Scott.
Can I, I read the background information, but I'm still not entirely clear on the ramifications, well, not, maybe ramifications is not the right word, but all the particulars that went into why our fair horse racing days are going to be held at a track in Maricopa County.
Chair Gahalva, Supervisor Scott, the bottom line is there will not be racing this year at Rito. There are two groups that provide racing, one through the Rito Foundation and Rito Racing, the other is through the Pima County Fair Horse Racing Commission. We will, we are soon to get back to you with an update. I think the last communication I had with the board indicating that we had a variety of requirements that were due to us by Rito Racing, including an audit and a variety of things. Those things have not occurred. At this point, there will not be racing. The Fair, then, the Fair Horse Racing Commission, made up of your appointees, would like to continue their four days. It inures to the benefit financially of the commission, which is helpful, and so they are asking for the approval of these dates, so they can then enter into negotiations to hold those four days somewhere else, since there will not be racing in Pima County at Rito.
Madam Chair, point of order?
Yeah. Supervisor Christie?
Has the clerk noted that Supervisor Heinz has left the meeting?
Well, he just did it, so Supervisor Scott was in the middle, so she was going to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Gahalva, board member Supervisor Heinz has left the meeting at 1:34. Thank you. He was in mid-sentence, so we exchanged a little post-it. Yes, thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item passes 3-1, with Supervisor Lee voting no. This is the end of our board meeting. Our next board meeting will be February 6th. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.